Is the council ready?
Yes, yeah. I should get ready.
Okay. On behalf of the Vista City Council, we'd like to welcome you to our city council meeting this evening. The first item of business would be the call to order and roll call, and we'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation, and that'll be offered by Minister Tom Furr, Vista Church of Christ.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council, members of the city. Let's please, hands over our heart, and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Or stand.[161.01][161.01](Laughter). I'm a non-traditional preacher. Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, Creator of the universe, giver of all that is good, rewarder of those who diligently seek You, Father, we come to in prayer just thanking You so much for this council, for the mayor, for those members of our city who have the desire to serve, who have the heart to serve, who are willing to set aside their own needs and desires and to look out for the best interests of our city. Father, we thank You for this city, we thank You for this state, we thank You for this country, which was built on principles of freedom, principles of liberty, principles which give us the opportunity to pursue life, liberty, and happiness. Father, we pray that as the council approaches certain decisions this evening, that they'll take into account the intention of our forefathers, that the intention is there, that we be all free to pursue happiness as we seem fit. Father, especially concerning the things that are on the agenda tonight, especially the conditionally used permit for the Vista Calvary Chapel, I pray that the council will take into account the needs there, and we'll remember that by promoting and protecting and providing for the freedom of religion within our city, that what they are doing is they're providing for the freedom of people to promote righteousness, and that in the course of pursuing that righteousness, they will actually be protecting the city, protecting us, so that we can have a long, happy, and fruitful life here. Father, we ask all these things in Your name. We pray that You will watch over us and bless us always, in His name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And we'd like to welcome our students from Rancho Buena Vista High School. It's always good to have you with us, and we hope that you are impressed enough with what goes on in local government, that someday, when you have the opportunity, you might want to participate even more. So, again, we're happy to have you with us. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Mayor, there are no additions or deletions. However, there is an order change, and that would be for items D3 and D4 to be switched, and for the discussion item on capital improvement plan budget for South Santa Fe Area Improvements project for 2007, 2008 through '11, '12 would be taken prior to D3 on the entire capital improvement budget.
Okay.
So, we have to ask, so Councilor Lopez can recuse himself from that, then he can go on and participate in the entire discussion.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a report on the closed session that was held just prior to the meeting. Mr. Piper?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The council did meet in closed session on the three items listed on this evening's closed session agenda. No actions were taken that are required to be disclosed at this time.
Thank you. And next, we have presentations. We have three different presentations that we need to make, so just come down to there and we'll proceed. First of all, we have a certificate of appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Amanda Rigby. We're very happy to have you on the commission, and thank you very much. And I think you need to turn around, so someone can get a picture of you.
Thank you, Mayor.
We hope you enjoy your stay on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Next, we have a proclamation. As many of you might know, and if you don't know, you should know, this coming Saturday, we have our annual Vista's Rock Community Participation Program. And with the Vista's Rock, what we do, and if you're not familiar with it, we go into an area of the city where there may be 25 or 30 homes, and we have upwards of about 800 volunteers that will help to go in and help beautify that area of town. It might mean painting houses, removal of debris, landscaping, and whatever else. We have teams from various community groups that come in and do this. And so, if you haven't had that opportunity to participate, you should. This year, it's going to be over, in fact, probably you ought to be telling me that, don't you?
Okay. This year, it will be in the townsite neighborhood of Cananea and Calera, and it's a big T right there that's bordered by citrus on one side and then Indian rock on the other. And we have 25 homes.
25 homes. That sounds good. Okay. We have a proclamation that I'd like to present, and I might want to introduce Maria Luisa Perez and Rosa Gallegos, and then, of course, Panchito Acevedo. We're happy to have you all here tonight. And let me read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas revitalizing the townsite neighborhood of Vista is of vital importance to the community as a whole, and whereas the innovative Vista's Rock Revitalizing Our Community project was first held in 1999 and has continued to grow each year, the partnership between the City of Vista and the Vista Townsite Community Partnership has achieved marked improvements in the neighborhood and has fostered an environment that encourages camaraderie and pride in the community. Whereas the 2007 project will channel the efforts of almost 800 volunteers focusing their energy on revitalizing approximately 25 houses on the streets of Calera and portions of Cananea, and whereas the project will include painting houses, removing trash, debris, and landscaping yards, and all in a spirit of community involvement. Whereas through Vista's Rock, individuals, local businesses, philanthropic groups, and public and private organizations work together to increase community pride through neighborhood improvements. Whereas the Vista City Council recognizes the need for and importance of community involvement in making these improvements. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 13, 2007, as Vista's Rock Day in the City of Vista." And I'd like to present that to you. Now, would you, anything else you'd like to say?
This is a wonderful event where the community comes together in a great day of service and fun, and we hope to see our volunteers there, and, you know, so everybody's invited to come. And just sign up online. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah. Not only do you get to work, but you also have, you get a free T-shirt.
Yes.
So that your other shirt doesn't get paint all over it, but nevertheless, you get paint all over everywhere. And we also have free lunch, and it's just a good time, and I think you'll enjoy it if you come out and participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[641.54][641.54](Applause).
Okay. Next, Chuck Gazoni.
Mark?
Come on up.
Mark?
It's good to meet you. And what we have here is the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive in October. Would you like to tell us a little bit about that before I read the proclamation?
Yes, be glad to. For the past 19 years, we have led the Knights of Columbus councils in San Diego County in getting money from the community, going around to the businesses, having them support us, and we average probably around $6,000 or $7,000 that we collect in a lot of pennies, nickels, dimes, quarters. We pass out Tootsie Rolls. At the weekend, we'll be in front of all the supermarkets, and we give the Tootsie Rolls away. And we have some businesses that have supported me so far. I've collected about $800 to pay for those Tootsie Rolls, and they're all Vista, great Vista community workplaces. So, I don't get any of the big ones, I get the small ones.
It's a great project. Let me read the proclamation that we have. It says, "Whereas the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive is October 19th and 20th and 21st of 2007, whereas over 550 councils of the Knights of Columbus in California will conduct their annual candy drive in communities across the state to raise funds for developmentally disabled children and adults in California in this 20th annual drive, whereas all money collected locally will be donated to organizations such as the Vista Special Olympics and Downstown. Whereas developmentally disabled citizens, especially in financial times like these, need the support of the public so that they can develop and be productive, contributing members of the society. And whereas the Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation and support of all involved with the candy drive and commend them for their efforts to help others. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim October 19th, 20th, and 21st as Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll Drive in the City of Vista, and urge all citizens to support this important fundraising activity to help the developmentally disabled children and adults in Vista and throughout all of California." So, we'd like to present that to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I think you have something else you'd like to do.
Yes, we do this every year, just like we'll be doing on the weekends, 19th and 20th. We pass out Tootsie Rolls, so we're going to have some of our adults here that have Down Syndrome pass out Tootsie Rolls to everybody, and I have one for the mayor.
And you'd like to have contributions, wouldn't you?
We'd love to have contributions. There's nothing wrong with that. I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.[843.82][843.82](Applause).
Kathy, we have some of them coming up.
Thank you.[847.82][847.82](Applause). Thank you. 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 Bye.[948.82][948.82](Applause). I think I overlooked also, we have, it looks like, a portion of a troop of Boy Scouts with us that undoubtedly are working on their citizenship in the community, merit badge, I would imagine. Is that true? We're happy to have you with us tonight. What troop were you from?
424.
424. Well, we're happy to have you with us. Okay. The next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is a time when those in the audience that wish to speak may do so on items that are not currently on the agenda, and the time limit for each is three minutes. Our first speaker is Albert Verick.
Well, I guess you all know me. I've been an old fogey here for 29 years in Vista and retired for 17, and every time I've come here, I've only come here because it's things I would like to make better in the city. A safer city, a cleaner and nicer city. And this morning, excuse me, I was happened to write a check to pay my car insurance, and it reminded me of something on here. I see in the papers, we have these checkpoints every so often in the city, Carlsbad, we do, and I'm just shocked at how many cars that are stopped that have no insurance, they have, driving under the influence, no driver's license, and sometimes even the car stolen. It's outrageous how many. I didn't realize it. If you multiply, say if you get three out of 200, and you multiply it, that's a lot of vehicles out there, and looking at my insurance policy, I'm paying the difference. I'm having to buy insurance to protect myself from these people. And these checkpoints are working, and what I'm saying, we should have a lot more of them. We need to clean the city and get these people off the road. Why should I pay the bill? And it's not me, it's all of you are paying the bill for these people. If I have to buy it, they should too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verick. Next, we have Scott, Scotch Falls, I'm sorry, Scotch?
Scotch Falls Vista resident. I'd like to thank you for your service. Will you join me in a moment of silence for the thousands of Americans that are murdered Thank you. According to a statistic released by Representative Stephen King of Republican Iowa, if these numbers are correct, it translates to 4,380 Americans murdered by illegal aliens every year. That's 21,900 since September 11, 2001. These numbers overshadow the men and women that have sacrificed their lives to keep this nation safe from terror. As tragic as these deaths are, men and women that freely give their lives for a worthy cause, God bless them all. The 21,900 Americans that have been murdered since September 11, 2001 by illegal aliens did not freely give their lives. All their deaths could have been prevented by leaders like yourselves. Why did they die? We should be combating the evasion of illegal immigration. I am reminded daily by the sight of day laborers how cheap labor is more important than obeying the laws. Recent murder of Ivan Ortiz, October 30th, rape, and attempted murder of a woman in Bonzel tells me that the cost of cheap labor has gone up. These two tragedies are just a few. You can find this happening in every city of America. I'm asking that more ICE enforcement and Border Patrol agents be put in the City of Vista so that our children and families can be safe, make our city safe. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Chuck Rabel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Chuck Rabel, 821 Crescent Drive. Don't see much about it in the paper, but it's coming, that thing called a spender. And as I was looking through the hundreds of pages in preparation for this meeting tonight, I noticed that the, there was a traffic light at Phillips and Escondido that, according to the document, says, yes, there is one there, but I guarantee you, it's not there. Brings to mind that this thing's going to happen, and like it or not, it's going to have a major impact on traffic in this town. Let's do all we can to make sure that that's minimized, and let's not get too excited when we see all those empty trains going back and forth. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes oral communications. Next, we'll go to the consent calendar. I have one request from the audience to pull item C9 if there are any questions. Does any member of the council have any items that they'd like to pull from the consent calendar? Or do you have any questions on C9? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Adoption.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent calendar. Would you please cast your votes? And that passes unanimously. Okay. We'll next go to item D1. Item D1 is the first discussion item for this evening. It's the short-term improvements for the Vista Skate and Bike Park. And I think Mrs. Brendel will be offering this staff report, our Parks and Community Services Director.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask the city attorney, do I need to recuse myself?
It'd be a good idea.
Then, to the public, I own property within 500 feet of the subject item that's going to be discussed, so I need to recuse myself and not involve myself in a discussion.
We'll wait for Mr. Campbell to leave the room, and then we'll be... Mrs. Brendel.
Thank you. Good evening. Bill Crane, our administrative analyst with our department, has become very familiar with our skate park in the last few months, and he's going to give our report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The following presentation will provide staff's recommended short-term improvements at the Vista Skate and Bike Park. At the August 7 workshop, the city council reviewed and considered various alternatives regarding crime and vandalism concerns at the Vista Skate and Bike Park. Based on this discussion, the city council agreed that the skate park should remain open and directed staff to begin the process of finding a new skate park location, comply with commitments made to neighbors when the skate park was built, evaluate additional lighting, explore web camera surveillance options, explore increased supervision, evaluate special programs for the 12 and underage group, trim low-lying vegetation to improve visibility, remove the interior wrought iron fence, and explore the use of membership cards and card scanners. The agenda report for this item provides staff's recommendation on all of these issues. The goal of staff's recommendation for action at tonight's meeting is to minimize the skate park-related concerns with least cost to the city in order to ensure the successful operations at the current site for the next 10 months. Therefore, several improvements that were originally considered are no longer being recommended due to their costs and the short-term need. There's been several changes that have occurred at the skate park since the August 7 workshops. The operations at the skate park have run more smoothly since that date with fewer incidents. The incidents that have occurred are listed in Exhibit 6 of the agenda report, and as recently as today, staff observed persons slipping through the gaps in the fence to illegally access the skate park. Regardless, staff attributes the success to four significant changes that have occurred since that date. These changes include increased supervision. Supervision has been doubled to two supervisors being present at all times. Supervisors are now more comfortable when approaching park patrons to deal with enforcement issues and have been experiencing less harassment. The skate park is no longer open during non-supervised hours. Helmet and pads are required to enter the park. Additional safety gear has been purchased so that users without personal safety equipment can still utilize the facility. Loitering is now prohibited. Any person wanting to view the users of the park must wait outside the gates unless they are the legal guardians. To address city commitments made to the skate park neighbors, staff recommends planting additional oleanders along the city-installed fence, repairing the existing drip irrigation, and repairing the bent fence post on the eastern end of the fence. These changes have been discussed and agreed to by the resident that is most directly impacted. Estimated cost of these improvements are $850. Here, you see a picture of the fence in question with the oleanders there on your right-hand side, and the fence, the gap on the eastern end or left-hand side of that picture is what we believe where several years ago, a car rolled down that slope and rested against that fence and pushed it away, and that's why there's that gap there. Repairing that would be part of this funding. Staff recommends installation of lighting on two existing library and civic center light poles. The installation of additional light pole with a motion detector-operated lighting and a web camera is no longer recommended due to the high cost of these improvements for the short term. Estimated cost of this installation, additional lighting, excuse me, is $3,500. Staff also recommends adopting a new staffing plan at the skate park. This plan is currently being implemented, which includes an increased pay range to attract higher-quality applicants and the assignment of two supervisory staff persons at all times. Estimated cost of the additional staff is $20,456. Staff is further recommending establishing programming on Saturday mornings for children's 12-years of age and younger. Current staff would be utilized for this programming, and it would be advertised in the next edition of People Parks and Programs, which is available January 2008. The cost of this program would be covered with existing resources. Staff recommends the thinning of trees and shrubbery along the southern side of the skate park to increase visibility into the park from Eucalyptus Avenue. This would also be covered with existing resources. From this picture here, you can see where the yellow line is, which is essentially at the top of the wrought iron fence. We'd propose to trim all the branches beneath that line. And to conclude, the total cost of staff's recommended short-term improvements is $24,806. Staff has begun researching available properties and opportunities for a new skate park, and will return to the city council with a recommendation prior to the end of this year. This concludes staff's report. We are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, again, just to repeat, the length of time that the skateboard will be in the present site is, at most, in two years?
That's our understanding.
Actually, less than that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Council, any questions or comments? Uh, no speakers.
No, that's two.
No, no speakers. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I noticed that you, one of the, one of the items says that, uh, to lift the trees, trim the trees. If we've been having trouble right along, how come that hadn't been done?
We've been having some discussions on that. As, as you know, at the last meeting, when we did have neighbors come to talk, they had expressed concern. We had scheduled the work to trim the trees some months back and we notified the neighbors that we'd be doing that, and the neighbors, um, contacted us with, um, very concerned about, um, doing that. And so, we pulled that work until we were able to come to you at the last meeting, and the neighbors again spoke in concern of trimming the trees. So this is somewhat of a compromise that we're proposing tonight, is not, their concerns were their visibility into the dirt lot, um, that they liked looking at the trees instead of looking into the dirt lot, um, dust coming up into their homes and possibly sound barrier from the trees. So we feel that this is a bit of a compromise, that it will open it up at least to the sightlines of, of the height of the fence, but should not affect any of those concerns that those neighbors have, have expressed.
So you're saying $24,000 for the first year, so it'd be $50,000, close to $50,000 for the remaining time that they're gonna be there?
No, actually, this $24,000, um, would cover us through, um, needing to close the park and relocate it somewhere else. And, and that's in addition to what we already have in our budget, so this is what we're proposing is $24,000 to carry us through in addition to what we already have budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, I, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and personally support this, but one of the things that bothers me about this is that, uh, the taxpayers put the money out for this and these young kids, uh, do not respect what goes on there over the years. And I hope that, that, uh, they look at this and behave in that park because it's just, while it lasts, because, uh, it's difficult to, to, to put things here for our community and the young children destroy things in our community. I don't appreciate that and, uh, uh, good luck with it.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
Um, my only suggestion in addition would be, um, to put a camera in there and I, I would think that maybe you could use a camera there and then transfer it to the new park when you use that. That's $4,200, but I think that would maybe take care of some of the, um, you know, if, if there's vandalism going on or something, that it would, it would deter that. So that would be my only suggestion. I would, I would request that if, if anybody would agree with me on that.
Just a question on that. Can we put a camera in a location that where it won't be vandalized and destroyed?
Thank you, we do have some information on the cameras. Some information is in your report. Um, we have looked at it quite extensively as to location that would be least likely to be vandalized. Um, I don't think there's anything as a foolproof camera. The one thing that's, um, a bit misleading in the report is the, the cost of the $4,000, excuse me, plus dollars, is that's for the camera himself, but we actually need a, a pole to put them on for the reason of having them in a location that they won't be secured. That pole and also lighting, because most of the vandalism occurs after dark, and so we need enough light for the camera to be able to pick up images after dark. So that portion of the cameras was in our lighting portion of the report, so we need to actually pull that out. So from the research that we've done with our IT department, to put up, uh, the camera, the light, um, and the pole is, um, Mr. Crane, can you help me with that number?
Roughly about $10,000.
And of that, the camera certainly would be transferable to another location, um, but of course, the, the pole and the lighting and a lot of the expense is the cabling to get it there. And the reason the cabling wasn't in that $4,000-plus dollars for the cameras is because the cabling is necessary to put the light in. So that's why it's in two components there. So it's actually about $10,000. We also looked at networking of, of, uh, the, the cameras, and again, Mr. Crane has more of the technical part from IT that, and, and he can explain that a bit.
Well, one of the reasons why we, we weren't considering so much a wireless camera is because of the bandwidth. It doesn't carry the same bandwidth as a network camera, so you wouldn't get the same sort of, um, picture quality. There also would still need to be a wireless access point, which would probably be installed near this, um, the fire pretension, fire, excuse me, fire prevention trailer. That would be, could be more than $1,000 roughly. Um, and then there's, if we were to get some sort of, looking into some sort of a temporary, um, camera, like a rented facility, that would likely be at ground level and there would be, we would probably have some vandalism concerns about that as well.
Okay.
Could you not, like, cannot, like, some of the things be reused, like the lighting and the, some of that be reused? Could, you know, the pole, could you not, when you move the park, could you not reuse that stuff?
We could. That, that equipment we could, the, the cabling cost, we could not recover, but the other equipment that we could...
The pole you could, maybe the lights you could, and the camera you could?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I, I still think, I don't know, I still think that would be a good idea.
Okay, very good. Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, this picture doesn't do it justice, 'cause really it's, it's at nighttime that really most of the vandalism, vandalism occurs. So, um, you know, this is a little premature, where we're gonna talk about, uh, this new city hall in just a bit, and I know it's part of that conversation of saving some of the trees that are presently at the site. Are these, are we looking at some of these trees that might be saved?
I don't think that's...
Commander's lead and I have a yes.
We stated that, um, with, uh, the advent of, of construction there is that we would look at any of the trees that could be boxed, and if they're, if they're, they can be boxed, uh, we would, uh, save them. Some of the larger ones, unfortunately...
Final determination that hasn't been made yet.
Okay, okay.
And the smaller ones, we, we might be able to...
So we can't make a determination to remove some of these trees at this point?
I don't think so.
I mean, to me, to me, eucalyptus are a dime a dozen and, um, you could remove those eucalyptus to the right of this picture. I'm just supposing, uh, and that would give us a clearer picture of the actual park itself.
Council could make a determination. We, we're fairly sure that some of the larger ones, we would not be able to, to, uh, box and, and save.
Oh, I realize that.
But we could, we, if you would like us to make that determination, um, in the near future and remove the ones that we know will be removed earlier...
I think, I think it could be part of the solution. Because, because I think the, the trees to the right of center probably could be removed, giving, giving our officers a much better and clearer view of that with a, with a, um, a spotlight. And I, I would cut those trees up above that line even. Uh, I don't know if there's any tree lovers out there, but, uh, it wouldn't damage the tree permanently and I think it'd give us better visibility. Also too, I, I originally opposed the keeping this park open. Uh, now knowing that we're going to close it down, um, when we build a new city hall, makes me feel a little more comfortable that we're, we're going to be addressing the, the needs of the immediate neighbors there. I agree with the improvement of the fencing, fencing for the neighbors. I agree with the lighting. Like all lighting, I'm sure this is not gonna be bulletproof. It could be vandalized. Okay. And, um, I agree with additional staffing, uh, with the caveat that we do try to find, uh, young people that are strong enough to withstand the, the abuse that's gonna occur at this site and, and to, and to stand up to some of these individuals that will, will, um, challenge them, which, which tends to happen at this site. You said something about, um, you said something about, uh, telling the young people there that they can't loiter within the gates. Now, what did you refer to by the gates? Within the park itself or just the gates of the park, of the skate park?
Within the, we have a, actually now there's a single point of entry into the skate park up at the top of the steps there.
Okay.
And that's where we're controlling access to and from the park.
Okay.
If persons come in, basically if they're not coming in with gear on, ready to skate, they're not, they're not allowed into the park.
Into the, the grass area?
Into, well, they can be outside of that wrought iron fencing.
Hmm. Because the loitering I see occurs by the bathrooms and, and some of the damage that occurs, occurs by the bathrooms. Um, I, I think we should be a little stronger in that loitering ordinance in code enforcement or sheriffs.
I think we have a bit of a fine line because of the public park that we have there, and so we feel that we can enforce what's inside the fencing.
Yes.
Um, we did, when, um, when we were looking at it as long-term solutions and not necessarily the short terms, one of our recommendations would be to go ahead and fence in that restroom area there and to secure that off so that could be part, because, yes, people do loiter in that area, but there again, we were kind of looking at 11 months, how much do we spend and what do we do? So that was where we, our recommendation was coming from.
One, one other thing I'd recommend is, how long before you think these improvements, if, if we were to agree to them tonight, how long before these improvements be in place?
We're ready to go on all of them. Um, we can get everything done within the next three weeks, I think. The, the cameras would be an exception to that if we do the cameras. The lighting, our existing poles, we're ready to go on it. The landscaping will be taken care of right away. We're already in gear on the supervision. Um, we're, we're ready to go on everything.
Okay, okay. Well, and the last thing I would say then, you know, is, I would want to revisit this in about six months after those improvements are in and see if it made any difference.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one of the things that, you know, you mentioned, uh, to knock down some of those trees, Mr. Gronky?
Yes.
Well, you know, if you start knocking down the trees right now, I think that'll just create more noise for the neighbors up on the hill there. Uh, more noise, more dust because of that, uh, lot that's, that's there that's not paved. Uh, it also creates, uh, shade there for those kids to play in there, in that area. Uh, it probably shades out over the fence, looking at that, uh, picture there. Uh, we can always knock them down later, but I think, I think the noise, the dust, the shade, uh, lifting those up, uh, I think would, would do it. I, I would wanna see those trees come down until we're ready. Because of the noise for those neighbors up there. Once we get, once we get the, uh, the, the design, the landscaping, the back part of it, you know, that, then we can knock the ones we have to knock down. Get the, the replacement up there and towards the back first before we start knocking anything down the front.
Okay. One question is, how, how soon do you think we'll be having a report back to, to an alternative site?
Well, we're working on sites every day, um, and we tentatively have scheduled to come to you, uh, the second meeting of November.
Okay.
Um, I'm thinking it might stretch to the first meeting of December, but before the end of the year is our goal.
Okay. Very good. And Mrs. Ritter, you have something else to add?
I was just gonna add about the, excuse me, about the trees, because I, I wanna be sensitive to the neighbors that live back there. They've had to deal with these kids for a long time and so they, I requested the trees remain because of the reasons that Mr. Lopez gave. Um, and also the skateboarders requested they remain because it, it shades the skateboard park. So I, I'm all for trimming them up so we can see in there, but I, I wouldn't wanna remove them yet.
Okay.
So, um, so do you want me to make a motion then?
Uh...
Are you ready for that?
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion.
Then, excuse me, the, um, let's see, what would the motion, um, provide directions of staff? And I would go to staff recommendation. Um, does anybody else agree with the cameras or do you not? Do you want me to include that or not?
Oh, I agree.
Okay, and then I'll include, I'm adding the cameras and, you know, that we can move.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Just one comment that I have and is the fact that it's just a shame that so few cause such a problem for so many. And, um, it's just kind of the nature of, of, of our society, I think. And, uh, I know that skateboarding is a, is an activity that kids thoroughly enjoy and there aren't, you know, among them, I think probably a very few of them that are the ones that are causing most of our problems. And so hopefully with the supervision and the cameras, uh, we'll be able to, to, to change that and, uh, that we'll build these things in to the next site that we, uh, that we have. Because I, I, for a while there, I thought, well, let's just get rid of the whole thing and not do it anymore, but I think it's an activity that, uh, I think, since we do prohibit skateboarding and other, uh, that similar activity on our city streets, uh, downtown streets anyhow, that, uh, we, we need to find an alternative for them. So with that, uh, did you have one more comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. Gronky?
I just wanted to say, um, I would agree to the, to the, um, conditions of this if we were to remove the camera. I just, we heard from staff that that camera's gonna cost a lot more than $4,000. In fact, the number I, I'm calculating is closer to $15,000, so...
How much?
Fifteen.
Is that, I thought it was $4,000 we're talking about.
It was $4,000, it was up to, with the pole and the...
To put it, to put it up there on, on top of a 20-foot pole and run the cabling up there to have a network would be roughly $10,000.
I'm not gonna say that. Okay, very good. Let's cast your votes. Okay, that passes with Mr. Gronky voting no. Okay, Mr. Campbell, if you'll come back, we'll go on to item number two. And this is the operating budget for fiscal year 2007 and 2008 and fiscal year 2008 and Mr. Gardner?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, folks here in the audience at home. I'm Tom Gardner, I'm your finance director. With me is Laura Johnson, who is, uh, our management analyst, our financial analyst in the finance department.
Gardner, could you get up real close to that microphone?
I've gotta get up closer to this mic.
Yeah.
Or speak louder or no? You both? All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, this evening, what we'd like to present to the council is the 2007, 2008, and there are some minor adjustments to that since your approval back in June, 2008, 2009 estimates. And the council's actions this evening will be resolutions establishing the budgets for the citywide operating departments, budget units and funds, the Community Development Commission and for the Buena Sanitation District. The expenses for 2007, '08 are now projected or asked to be appropriated at $109,000, $109,700,000. There is only, um, 200, about 300, $3.2 million in adjustments, um, and those are actually in transfers to the CIP and are the result of us developing a CIP, which you will, uh, be looking at and approving later this evening. Other than that, there are no changes to the general fund, street, wave, redevelopment or sewer sanitation in the '07, '08 budget. For the '08, '09, uh, budget, we are, um, anticipating changes that are related to, um, fully implementing, uh, the, uh, fully, fully implementing in the general fund, uh, fire services with the new fire stations. Um, in addition, uh, we have some changes in terms of the sewer and sanitation, which are fairly large. That's actually an accounting change. We currently have the Encina payments in our operating budget. They'll be transferred to our CIP in '08, '09, that's why there's that $3 million reduction, and they will remain in there into the future. For the general fund, our appropriation recommendation is, uh, $115 million. In terms of our fund expenses by type, you see the changes are primarily in the staffing and as I, as I indicated earlier, those have to do with the full implementation of our community projects in terms of our fire stations. Additionally, those include, uh, council-approved, uh, labor agreements. There are a much larger number of transfers than you have seen in the past, and the council will get used to this over the next three years as we deal with the propell resources coming in, into the general fund, then placed into a reserve, brought out of the reserve and placed into capital projects as those projects are done. After the end of the three years, that transfer and out will be much smaller than it is now. Our allocated costs are our internal service costs and our, uh, capital projects are small capital that are in the operating fund. Major changes of the '07, '08 are, as I indicated, the added expenses and transfers related to the CIP, including fund balance estimates and the provision of $1 million in each of the year for street maintenance. These are appearing in your CIP fund, but they're actually general fund contributions to the CIP, and so, uh, they appear as an expense in your '07, '08. In terms of, um, the categories by general function, in terms of general government or public safety, community development, the greatest increase between '07, '08 and '08, '09 is approximately a $3.2 million increase in public safety. As I indicated earlier, that is the full staffing of your fire stations and about a million dollar increase in the law enforcement contract between '07, '08 and '08, '09. Uh, again, the, the transfers tend to change. This is only general fund transfers, so this number looks slightly different than you saw, uh, previously. Major changes in the '08, '09 are the full expenses for the new fire facilities at about $2.1 million, increase in law enforcement at about a million, increased insurance costs. Now, these appear in what are called your internal service funds or the risk... funds or the risk management fund, it's about $1.2 million. Additionally, we have implemented the council's policy of $1 million in fund balance available to be transferred to street repairs. That's recommended in the '07, '08 from the '05, '06 fund balance, and is recommended in the '08, '09 from what would be the '07, '08. If we don't think we have that much in '07, '08, we'll let you know, but at this point we are implementing the council's policy. With that, we can look at our, at least our general fund revenue with some detail. About 62% of your general fund resources, not including, including your fund balances, are taxes, and those taxes include your property tax, sales tax, et cetera. These taxes include $7.1 million, $7,110,000 of Prop L money in '07, '08, and a slightly greater amount, about $200,000 greater, in '08, '09. Property taxes are projected at a very low increase of about 2% in terms of turnover, and we're very conscious about the changes in terms of the real estate environment, so we have low projections in that case. We do have some concern about the overall sales tax, especially recently with reports on greater unemployment. A 5% unemployment rate means that as unemployment goes down, disposable income goes down. So we're going to be very watchful of these revenues, and we'll bring back any amendments in the '08, '09 year that we see appropriate during the mid-cycle. Other than that, the remaining revenues are pretty stagnant. Intergovernmental, you'll notice, is extremely a low, low resource now, as, as state and federal resources are not as big as they were decades ago. With that, your, your revenue resources go from about $64.9 to $68.5 million, and your fund balances are just around $3 million each year, about 4.2%. That's very normal. That's about the gap that you would expect in terms of fund balance. With that, finalizes our overall presentation. If council members have any questions regarding this, we would ask that you look at the recommendations, which are three: adopting the resolution for the city, adopting the resolution for the Community Development Commission, and adopting the resolution for the Bueno Sanitation District Board.
We have one speaker, so we hear him first before... Okay, Mr. Abel.
Just a couple comments, I'll make it quick. Went back to '05. General fund in '05 was $49 million. Two years later, it's $68 million, headed to $74 million next year. One would assume, or one would hope, that the staff can figure out the difference between fixed cost and variable cost, and we can get, get the full bang for our buck now that we have all this money. One small comment, if I can. This document's 243 pages, and it does have a table of contents with page numbers. However, idiots like me that go online and download and print, the print version hasn't got, hasn't got page, page number one, or any subsequent pages. Next time out of the box, maybe there'll be some testing done on the front end so that the transactions with the city will be a little more user-friendly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Abel. That's all the public comment that we had, or that I have speakers' slips for. So first of all, Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, thank you. Can I refer you back to the document itself?
Yes, sir.
To page 23 in particular? Please. Under Revenue, a brief explanation of other revenue from this coming up fiscal year, we, or this current fiscal year, we had $3.38 million in other revenue, and it's dropping to $698,700. Forecast? And I just wonder, what does that comprise?
I'm on page, I'm on page 23, sir. Which is information technology and other funds?
No, I'm under Fund Summary.
Okay.
The operating budget.
Information technology?
Pardon me?
You're referring to the all funds total?
Mm-hmm, yeah. All funds total, fund summary.
All funds, fund summary.
Page 23 on the bottom. Revenue section, other revenue, a shift of about nearly $3 million.
I believe that's probably grant funding.
Oh.
Is that correct, Mr. Gardner? Right up under revenues, then it has taxes, and you come down to the very bottom where it says total revenue, the line item right above total revenue, says other revenue. We had a number of grants. Is that, what that is accounted, accounted for? It's $3.388 million, and then, and for fiscal year '08, '09, it goes down to $698,700. Were those some of our homeland security grants?
Which were substantial.
It was substantial.
I'm not sure. I'd be glad to research that particular item for the council member.
Okay. And then the last was a very simple one, I think, on page 28, under bottom section, under your object number, 421-800-TRASHFEES. To date, there is a large receipt, it looks like, of $179,000, but generally, in most years, it's like $48,000.
Correct. I don't have specific information on what the variance was in the current year, but I'd be glad to research that for you as well, sir.
It's not, neither one are major issues, it's just, I was curious what happened there. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gronky.
My questions go back to Prop L. When we look at the general fund, and that's where the Prop L money's going initially into, into the general fund, is that true?
Correct.
Okay, so are we going to set up a separate account within the general fund to, you know, track this money that comes in through the sales tax?
Um, we, we will, we will segregate the funds, and I understand that through the city manager's office, we'll be providing you with a separate report. When those funds come in, they are reseeded as a revenue to the general fund under sales tax, and under our tax summary in the beginning, if you turn to page, let's see, where we can do that for you. The sales tax that is on page 14, that is $21 and $23 million, that includes $7.1 million in, in the Prop L sales. Then we set it up into reserve. The reserve is accounted for in a separate account.
Okay.
When the council authorizes for us to expend those resources on either a capital item or an operating item, such as firefighters, then what we do is we identify a transfer from that reserve back into either the CIP or into the general fund, which notes that specifically. So when you look at the transfers, for instance, on page 24 and 25, there are, the Prop L transfers are on the very top of that page, which are the initial illustration, and where they're going, and that they're going out of and into the general fund. Now, you're not going to have nearly as many in the, in the '07, '08, because our projects aren't coming to fruition until '08, '09, and in '08, '09, they'll be a much larger. I believe we also set up a page for you on Prop L, on page 27.
Okay.
That highlights for you the funds anticipated to be used in the '07, '08 are about $286,000. Those are primarily for firefighter staff, and in '08, '09, that will be firefighter and paramedic, as well as law enforcement for about $325,000. Those will be in the operating budget.
So it's all documented, and the oversight committee that will have in place for Prop L will have this documentation available to him.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. We had an increase in the safety of our community with the sheriff's departments for possibly, would you say, $1 million?
You had an increase that occurred, the council adopted an increase, I believe, last November, that I'm not sure exactly when the sheriff's department actually implemented that program. So there was a small portion of it in the '06, '07 budget. In the '07, '08, a major portion of that is actually being funded with the general fund. And in '08, '09, we begin to pick it up with Prop L funding at about the $235,000 level. The actual cost of that supplemental program is greater than that, but the amount of Prop L money is, as I've just indicated.
I just want to add to the, the increase. We increased our, the, the amount, but we also had a, just for the, for the public to know, that we had a 21% less crime in our community. So I think we, we made the right decision here, so that's a good positive thing. Now, with the price of housing going down, assessed valuation going down, did you figure on or plan on the people having difficult times here in the near future with their homes and changing the assessed valuation? Will that affect your budget much, or do you have, did you plan on, you know?
We're trying to monitor, Councilmember Lopez, we're actually trying to monitor that almost on a monthly basis. When we began this budget as adopted for '07, '08 in June, for instance, there was not much information in June about subprime rates. I met with two realtors a couple of weeks ago, and they were saying that almost 50% of the housing turnover in fairly upscale portions of Vista are as the result of bank ownership or short sales. So what happens in those environments is the tax is still paid to us. That is, even if the bank is holding the tax, they pay us the property tax. What occurs is if the house is sold for a lower amount and then reappraised at that lower sale price, we will be impacted by that, that delta between the two. When you look at overall property taxes, it takes a lot of shift in that direction to shift substantially our dollars and our projections, because keeping in mind that on $100,000 change, only $1,000 is taxable, and only $114, $140 is going to the city. So for, for us to lose $100,000 in assessed value translates into $140 to us as a city. So if that's offset by other properties that are being developed or other properties that are being sold in the normal market, it, it takes a while for that. Also, there tends to be a lag, about a six months to, almost to a year lag. So my concern will be in the, in the first and second apportionments that we see in December and April of the upcoming year, and seeing if we see any substantial change from our previous patterns. There should be some, but I'm not saying that it's going to be a half a million or a million dollars, because that would take a huge amount of assessed value.
Thank you. Okay, any other further discussion? You know, I find it interesting, hearing Mr. Abel talk about the increase in the amount of the general fund budget. I, I remember very vividly the very first Vista general fund budget that I worked on was exactly about $1,500,000 for the total general fund. And so it's, it's increased substantially because we've had a, a community that's changed substantially. We have a number of, of more people living here, working here, and of course, the cost of providing for those services has gone up substantially too. But I, I echo his thoughts that we, we need to do everything we possibly can to make sure that we get the biggest bang for our bucks, and that we don't see these, these increases, the substantial increases. So it's incumbent upon us all to make sure that that is kept in check. With that, do we have a motion to, or take the three motions that, to adopt the resolution, the Community Development Commission resolution, and the Bueno Sanitation District resolution? Mr. Campbell?
No. Please, Mrs. Ritter. Mayor, I've moved for adoption of all three resolutions.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please cast your votes. You know, I just advise that we've got a lobby full of people that are here for a specific...
Did you read that?
Pardon?
It was passed unanimously.
We have a lobby that is here full of people for public hearing number two, and so if council approves, I'd like to go ahead and go to public hearing number two, which is the Calvary Chapel Church and School. Is council okay with that? Okay, very good. Mr. Conley? I think we have some speaker slips. City clerk?
But it's still in the budget?
We didn't budget, we budgeted for one more.
Thank you.
Not for both.
We still don't have staff?
Yeah, we, we, correct.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a few folks that are going to come in for the second...
Wait just a second, until everyone gets in. If you please come in quickly and take a seat so that we can continue with our meeting, Please, there's plenty of seats up in front, if you'd like to come up, and just take your This is not church, you can come up to the front.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The project before you this evening is Calvary Chapel Church and School, planning case 8-168. The project site is located off North Melrose Drive, just south of the city boundary with Oceanside. The property is approximately 20.9 acres in size. Surrounding uses include the North County Transit District rail line to the north, North Melrose Drive, and commercial uses to the east, several non-conforming residences, commercial and industrial uses to the south, as well as an elementary school on the south side of North Avenue, and some existing industrial uses on the west side of the property. The property was graded in approximately 2000, 2001, with a parcel map, and a detention basin was created in the western portion of the property, which is visible in the aerial photo on the overhead. The project includes a request for approval of a special use permit for a church and a K-12 school, which would accommodate approximately 1,000 students. The project exceeds a 35-foot height limit on several of the buildings proposed, which is why the project is before the council this evening. An environmental impact report was prepared for the project to evaluate the impacts of the project on the surrounding environmental resources, which was put out for public review, and all of the comments received were responded to, which are in the pack at the evening. The project includes a site development plan, which has three buildings for the church and school, and a separate industrial building, as well as a tentative parcel map to create three commercial lots on the site. The site development plan shows a number of, the three church and school buildings would be located in the central portion of the property in a cluster. The industrial building would be located on the north side of the property, which is shown on the left side of the screen. There is a proposed multi-use field, which would be on the west side of the site adjacent to the detention basin. The project includes a number of parking spaces, approximately 820 parking spaces. Access is proposed via a signalized driveway at Melrose Drive, which would be, the signal would be installed with the project, as well as an unsignalized driveway on North Avenue, which is shown on the right side. The parcel map proposes to split the property into three lots. This shows a little bit better depiction of the site plan. The lots would include one for the church and school buildings, one for the industrial building, and one lot that would cover the multipurpose field. The project proposes extensive landscaping throughout the site. Approximately 55% of the site is landscaped. About a third of that is the multi-use field, and the other two-thirds comprises the slopes and internal landscaping, as well as the detention basin. and internal landscaping, as well as the detention basin. The project proposes a mission architectural style. It generally includes tile roofs, arched openings, and some decorative features. The elevations show a comparable design for all of the buildings. This shows one of the church buildings, I believe the gymnasium building. The church and—the church buildings and the industrial building would be designed in a similar architectural style. The planning commission considered the project on September 4th, 2007, and recommended city council approval unanimously with a vote of 7-0. Staff is supporting the planning commission's recommendation and recommending approval of the project because it is consistent with the general plan, would provide needed services for the community, and is compatible with surrounding land uses. And that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a number of people who wish to speak, so if it's all right with council, go ahead and call their names off now, and then we'll have—unless you have some burning questions before we do that. Okay. This is a public hearing, and this is your time to speak. The first individual is Rob Salvato.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here and appreciate everything that you do for our community. My name's Rob Salvato. I'm the pastor at Calvary Chapel in Vista. And I moved to Vista from Orange County in 1984, and I was really excited to come and be a part of a smaller community. And in fact, my brother came down to visit right after, and he asked the question, "What do you do here?" That was his impression of Vista back then. But I was also thrilled to be a part of a—of a church that had a heart to serve its community. And I've told our congregation often that it's dangerous when a church can only see—can't see beyond its own four walls. And although Vista, over the years, has changed a great deal and it's grown over the years, Calvary Chapel Vista has grown with it. And we are a congregation of over 2,500 adults. But one of the things that hasn't changed is Calvary Chapel Vista's desire to serve and give to our community. And I think this is seen in many, many ways. We have a once-a-month community cleanup and beautification program that we do called Salt and Light, where we try to help out the community in that way. We have an extensive drug and alcohol program that meets on Tuesday nights, and we have staff members that go regularly to share and teach at Green Oaks Ranch in Casa Rafael. We have people who donate time to the crisis pregnancy centers in our area. And also, we offer free family and marriage and crisis counseling to people in our community. We have two ladies in our church who oversee a volunteer staff of 45 people that go in weekly and share at the Vista jail for the women there. And we have youth leaders who have assisted in student-led Christian clubs at the various high school and junior high campuses. And just as the city of Vista has grown, so has Calvary Chapel Vista's. A lot of you remember, we started as a little church off of Hacienda, moved to the Happy Home Center in 1987, our current facility. And our church outgrew that facility in 1994. We do three services right now, in the morning on Sundays, one on Sunday evening. And because of our limited parking, we have to kind of do church the way the Caccorian does movies. You know, we get people in, and we have to get them out in between the services. And we've really—as a church have longed for a facility where our church would be able to build community and where people would have the opportunity to stick around and meet one another and share and socialize and build relationships. And we've really desired a place where our kids would be able to—in our school. Another thing that we offer is private education to about 300 students in our school. But we've longed for a place where our kids would be able to have a place to play and feel to have home games and—
Pastor?
Yes?
We normally allow you speaker to have three minutes, but since this is your project—I mean, the project that you're leading, we'll allow you to have more, but I just wanted to tell everybody else that when they come up, it'll be limited to three minutes.
I was told it would be five, so I'm—I'm trying to go fast.
No. You take what you need, and it's your project, so go ahead.
I usually preach for 45 minutes at church, so. But, you know, we've searched for 13 years to try to find a new church home. And it's taken us a lot of different places, from Green Oaks Ranch to the—we looked at the Syntec Building over in Shadow Ridge, the old Kmart Building, which is now Burlington Coat Factory, Homebase. We were really interested in and actually met with the late former mayor Gloria McKellum about the property over off the freeway where the old driving range was. And she was kind of excited about us going there, but we missed out on that opportunity. And it was then that—that Mayor McComb had offered or recommended two pieces of property for us. One was a 10-acre, about nine-acre piece of property back behind the Valley Total Fitness. There's a little piece of land back behind that area. That was too small for us. And then the other one that she recommended was the property on Melrose that we are currently seeking approval on. And, you know, at one time, it was supposed to be a trash transfer station, or it had been proposed for that, and we felt like that would work great for us. At the time, the owner of the property was uninterested in—he wasn't interested in selling it to a church. So, we ended up looking at some property and spent a year and a half in doing due diligence on a property off of Mason Road, which was in the county land. And there was a lot of obstacles with that that we ended up having to walk away. And that was about three years ago, when the new owners of the property on Melrose actually were open to us seeking, you know, approval on that and seeking to be able to do something there. So, we entered into an escrow with them. And really, it's a site that will allow us as a church to function properly, which in a lot of ways, it's hard for us to do now. It'll also open up the door for us to give a lot more to our community. We—it'll give the opportunity for our schools to have the fields, and we're very excited about the possibilities of this location and the opportunity to better serve, I think, our community, which we've been doing for the past 25 years. So, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I just want to thank you for this opportunity that I've been given today to just share a brief testimony of what the Lord Jesus Christ has done in and through my life and what He continues to do. And I grew up here in Vista, lifelong resident. At the age of about 13 or 14, my parents were divorced, and that broke up my family and started getting into drugs, marijuana, methamphetamine at the age of 15. And at 16, I got involved with the Vista homeboy gang member, street gang here in this city, which I'm pretty sure all of you are well aware of. And from the age of six—at the age of 16, that's when I was addicted. I started doing heroin, and that just led me to a life of crime, incarceration. I started getting busted. I started getting arrested. And my life—it just became—that became the pattern for my life, you know? At the age of 18, hit the county jail. The judge spared me, gave me a chance, but at the age of 18 and a half, I was back in jail, and I was sent to state prison. Now, like I said, it was a pattern throughout most of my life until February 17th of 2006, when the Lord Jesus Christ revealed Himself to me in a way that I could not deny. Yeah, I could not deny it. And after giving my life to—the Lord, my life that night at 8:00 at night—it was a Friday—my life has never been the same since. And upon my conversion to Christianity, the Lord brought me to Calvary Chapel Vista. And since then, He's given me a wife. He's given me a 10-year-old son. And I'd just like to add that when that happened, my mom suggested I go see a psychiatrist. That's how—you know—that's how, you know, bad I was. And I just thank God for His grace and for His free gift of salvation, you know, that's available to anyone, to all mankind. And ever since then, He brought me to this church, to Calvary Chapel Vista, and I've gotten involved in the Sunlight Ministry there. And what we do there, we're in conjunction—or we go—we're side by side with one of the programs here in Vista in the community. It's the Weed and Seed Program. And what we do there, we go once a month, and we help out the elderly people in these mobile home communities that are unable to perform, you know, housework, clean up, you know, yard work and stuff outside their house due to disablements, due to their old age. They can't see and stuff like that. So, it just—one of—the ways that I'm able to give back to my community for all the years that I terrorized this place and did so many bad things, and it just blesses me. It blesses my wife, and it blesses my son, who go and do this with me. And I'd just like to add before I step away from here that, you know, this church that you see seated before you, it's not just a church congregation. They're more than just friends. They're my family. And I really, really pray that you guys vote for this and agree. So, with that said, I just—
Thank you. Next is Tina Durante.
Oh, you have your sign right here. Good evening, council. I first attended Calvary Vista the first Sunday of January 2003. I remember that date specifically because it was December 22nd, 2002, that my husband was deployed to Iraq. And it was two weeks later that I walked into this building called Calvary Chapel Vista with my neighbor. And there was something special about it immediately. And you know, when you walk into somewhere and you just know there's something different. And I felt it from the first person I met, and it wasn't just the Bible teachings that we get there that are tremendous, verse by verse, where we can learn practical ways to— I'm very nervous, sorry—to— to live out those verses. It was very difficult for me. My husband was gone for eight months, and it's very easy to be afraid and to feel lonely because your husband is in a place where he can be harmed or killed. And I didn't have a lot of people to talk to about it. I didn't have anybody who really could relate to that situation. I don't have any military friends, and I didn't even find any military friends at the church. But what I did find were people who wanted to be there for me, who cared, who cared about my situation, who talked to me and who prayed for me and my husband. And that was probably the biggest thing that I could have got there. And that's what I see every single day today, is that the heart of the people who go to Vista is tremendous. And these are the people that give to the community. There's 2,500 of them, Rob said. They're all—they're the most caring, loving, Lord-serving people that you ever want to meet. And that's exactly what they do in this community. They serve in the hospitals, in the convalescent homes, in the schools, in the jails, in shelters of every kind, whether it's a homeless shelter. I know that they give food twice a week. They do a million things, and it's because of the heart that starts from the pastor and goes all the way down. And I love Calvary Vista. I love it for what it does. It's more—it's not a place where I just go and hear about the Bible and the stories and how I could live my life better and how my family has bettered from it, but it's a place where I can go and get peace. I get hope there, and I get help. And I'm even more grateful that it's a place where I can go and is—I'm given an opportunity to give somebody that peace, that hope, and that help. And I don't know a community that couldn't use it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next would be Don Porter.
Good evening. My name is Don Porter, and I have lived in this area for 49 years, and I was born and raised in Oceanside. My wife was born and raised here in Vista. And I joined the service and was married, and we've been married for 49 years now. And we've lived at where we live right now—I'm nervous—we've lived there for 35 years, and I worked for La Sardi for 37 years. And when the Lord came in my life and began to change me, it made my marriage work finally. And I found a family in Calvary Chapel. I went to the church up on the hill, the little facility up on the hill. I've been going to Calvary Chapel since I was saved, and that was March 7th, 1981. And once He came into my life, He made a total difference in my life. And I found a family that I could love and be comfortable with. And my wife and I together really enjoy our pastors. My first pastor that I ever had was Brian Brodessen, which was the pastor before Rob. And I remember Rob, when he left and went to Oregon, I made a promise that I would pray for him each and every day, and I did so. And, you know, my life is—it's much better because of this church, and I believe that we need to grow, and we need a new facility to grow in. And I—and I pray that you will give us—that vote of confidence and allow us to build a new church that we can—we can be able to grow and minister more to the—to the people's needs of this community, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Next is Stanley Prowse.
Good evening. My name is Stan Prowse. I'm an attorney from Carlsbad. Hello, Mr. Piper. And—oh, goodness gracious. I'm here in behalf of Joyce Eby. I know—what do we do here? Can I point at this thing and something happens?
No.
No? Oh, well. Ms. Eby owns the residential lot—
What would you like to have happen?
The nonconforming residential lot at 1324 Maryland Drive. It's probably best characterized as the lot that time forgot. Ms. Eby is an older lady, and she's very concerned that someone is eventually going to fall off her lot and down one of these slopes. The—here's Ms. Eby's property up here. We have this two-to-one here, another two-to-one here, another two-to-one there. And I gather from looking at the site plan that the access road is going to come in on this side, and probably there's going to be a fairly vertical cut here. I don't know how you're going to engineer it. But Ms. Eby would respectfully ask that the Lord, with perhaps the help of the engineering department, would make sure that when this construction is done, she winds up with the fence at the top of the slope around her property, which I don't think is a whole lot to ask. And I hope that perhaps it would be within the plan as it is right now. But—
Okay, very good.
That's why I came down. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, Mr. Conley, did you have any comment to that?
Ms. Eby's property is the property on Maryland Drive. It's noted in the slide here. It's the farthest north on Maryland Drive before you go to the project site. There are some slopes that are north of her property that are a subject site that would be recreated as part of the project, and I'll have to defer to the applicant regarding fencing, but I'm assuming they're going to fence that portion of the property as well.
Okay. Well, we'll get to that when we have some questions from the city council. Mr. Lopez, did you have a comment?
Yes. Could—he give me that picture so I can take a look at it while the people speak?
Sure. You can put it up so everybody can see it.
Yeah, put it there. No, put it there so everyone can see it.
Because I can't—sometimes can't see it that well. Hopefully, I can.
Did you want to—
City clerk's working.
Turn the screen now?
We're working on it.
We're working on it. Mr. Conley, would you like to assist her? Okay. The next speaker is Ken Smith.
I really don't need to speak in—
Okay. And the final speaker that I have a slip for is Ford Amori.
Good evening. I—I wish you all well in your endeavor to get your-your church established. I'm a local resident, and my concern, on behalf of my neighbors as well, is according to the—the report which I was given, there's no consideration in here or mention of the Maryland School. And then, the—the concern is, in the existing roadway, the level of service— service, as it stands, without consideration of the Maryland School, that this area between Maryland and Melrose is considered unacceptable for the two-lane traffic. The elementary school kids come up from the east side of Melrose up north, and then when the school was put in, just an asphalt sidewalk was put in. And my concern is at, currently, the traffic situation is very bad, and especially during school hours. I was wondering what, or, or if stop signs could be considered installed at Maryland, at, and North Avenue to help the kids in the crossing, and also to reduce the speed of traffic. I, I am the last house before getting to Melrose, and constantly because of the grade, people are speeding down. And I would hate, I would hate that, you know, any child gets injured due to, due to the speed and the addition of the traffic. I'm, you know, I, I, I'm in favor of, of you folks getting your church. I just would like to have consideration for more traffic calming or, or control. But due to the opening of Emerald and the business traffic coming in from Oceanside, it's just, you know, with the, with the noted increase of, of pedestrian traffic with, with the church, I just would hate to see any, anyone get injured on that stretch. One other thing to mention is that one of the neighbors, when the Maryland School was put in, his driveway from Maryland was taken away, and an access gate to his property was open on North Avenue. There was a turnout there located across the street from the water tank, which he has to pull into, then cross the street to open the gate to access his property. And just, you know, it's a very difficult situation. For, for my wife, she has to time her activities just because we can't get out of the driveway. So it's, it's just a dangerous situation of four lanes, you know, squeezing down into two. And then, so I would just like possibly some type of traffic control considered for the, between that stretch. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conley, did you want to speak to that?
With regards to the improvements on North Avenue, the gentleman that spoke is correct, it is substandard at the current time. The only way to really resolve that situation from our perspective is to widen the road from the Oceanside boundary to Melrose. Unfortunately, there's some right-of-way constraints through that area. In the lower right-hand corner of your screen, you'll see between Maryland and North, there's some right-of-way acquisition that would have to occur with several homes. I believe there's three or four homes right there. In order for us to widen the street to four lanes through that section, we would most likely have to purchase those properties in order to make that happen. So because of the cost of doing that, and the cost of widening the road, there's, it's just not something that we can impose on the applicant at this time.
What about the request for the four-way stop, or the stop signs, I should say, at Maryland and North?
From the planning department's perspective, no problem. But I would probably.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
For that question as a city engineer.
No, I think what needs to be done is, Mr. Amori, is that that would have to go to our traffic commission, and we'd be willing to submit that to them for their consideration. Well spoken, Mr. Conley. Okay, any, this is your time to speak. Are there any others during the public hearing that would like to voice their opinions? Okay, if not, then it's our turn to talk about it now. Counsel, Mr. Gronke.
First of all, I, I think it's a great project, and I'll be voting for it, but I just have a couple of questions about it.
First.
No, thank you. When I look at the bottom of this picture right here, I see there's a residence in the middle of the development. Did they negotiate with that residence and try to have it removed? It seems like it probably will have some problems with that in the future, possibly.
Yes, Mr. Hammond is here this evening, who's the property owner. He was the one who negotiated with that property owner when the church was initially conceived. And I know that he's spoken to that owner about incorporating that site into the project site, but they were unable to come to an agreement.
So he's going to sit there?
For now, we can't compel them to include that site into the property if they can't come to terms on a cost of the property.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Gronke, there's one thing I forgot, if I might just interrupt. And that is, is that after we hear from those that are both for and against the project, I know there was one comment made regarding a property that, where there might be a fence needed. And perhaps the pastor, maybe you'd like to speak to that, or whoever you have from your group or committee.
We didn't have any problem with putting up a fence. And in fact, back when they first graded that slope, before we were even involved, a lady on the other end, her fence came down, and we actually went over and rebuilt it for her. So that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Gronke, I'm sorry.
Okay. Going back to the North Avenue issue, you addressed that already, but basically there's nothing we can do as a city until we acquire those other parcels.
That's correct.
Okay, so this, this, this project itself doesn't directly butt the, the place in question, so we can't ask them for any kind of improvements?
That's correct. The areas that are shown in red on the front of North Avenue are the areas that would be required to be improved per our code. It would, we would have to show a compelling reason why they would have to do off-site improvements. And from our perspective, it's not proportionate with the impact of the project to widen North Avenue from the Oceanside boundary to North Melrose Drive.
Okay, okay. It appears to me that the main access is off of Melrose.
That's correct.
And that would be an uncontrolled intersection?
That would be signalized with the project.
Signalized, okay, okay. And finally, this, this project is going to be done in phases? Is that the way that's projected?
That's the proposal.
Okay. And so the industrial site that they have, are they going to sell that parcel off? Are they going to retain that and lease it?
The industrial property would be retained by the current owner, which is the Hammond Companies.
Okay.
And they would sell the remainder of the property to the church to build their facility. So the church really has no role in the industrial building. That's a separate development.
And then there'll be a kind of a joint use on the parking for that facility, then?
There will be a reciprocal parking agreement for a portion of the parking on the industrial lot to accommodate the church's needs.
Okay, and both parties are agreement with that reciprocal?
That's a condition, and they have both agreed to that.
But you should imagine with the church, shouldn't be too much conflict because the hours would be different.
That's why staff is supporting it.
Fantastic. Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few other questions that maybe you'd want to jump past me, and I, I maybe I'll just tick off some of mine from the questions that come from other council members.
Thank you. That little section of that little, that home is right there, Mr. Conley, is, there's no way that we can actually do the widening there, so we're going to have a sawtooth effect there? Is that what we're going to have?
You are referring to the house on North Avenue?
Uh, yes.
Yes, we, we, well, the city has a discretion of either requiring the improvements or requiring an in-lu fee. Where it makes sense to require the improvements where they'll connect to other existing improvements and create a uniform pattern, we'll typically require that they be implemented at the time of the project. Considering the lack of improvements along North Avenue, we will most likely accept an in-lu fee for this project and not construct the improvements in those small areas.
Well, you know, that, that street is kind of a dangerous street. You know, you have that slope going down. I just hope down the road that we can do something about that, because it is kind of dangerous. You're adding more with the church here, especially coming and going every day. I have a couple of members of my family are part of your church, and, but, but that's not why I'm going to say okay to the project. But I feel that, that it is a good spot there for your church. You've been looking for a spot for a long time. And I think that this will be called home for you. And I think it's going to be a good project, especially you have a little, little tile roofs and little arches. It makes me happy. And. And I have one request only from, from you, that you don't put pumice grass in there landscaping. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, that's the only way you're going to get my vote, if you put it in there. All right, next we'll hear Mrs. Ritter.
Okay. I, I think this is a great project. Actually, I met with you, it's been several years ago that you were looking at this, and I think it's a much better use than the trash transfer plant was back several years ago. I was trying to envision it, and I looked at the plans, and I, and I actually read most of this, did, but I was trying to understand, is it like, is this like a parking ramp where you exit here, is there parking underneath that? You know, I see there's a, a bridge kind of that goes across there, and it goes into the building, doesn't it? Is there parking underneath that too, or is it, no?
You're referring to the upper parking lot, I assume?
The upper parking lot, and then, and then they walk across the bridge to the.
It's on the right side of the screen. That's correct. There'll be, there'll be a parking lot that'll be at the upper level, and then there'll be a bridge that goes across to the building, which would be a three-story building on the backside of their property there. The, the upper parking, there'll be a driveway that goes down the slope into the main portion of the site.
Oh, so the driveway can go down?
There will be great separation between those two parking areas, and there'll be a driveway connecting the two.
Okay. I looked at the plans, and I was trying to figure out, I was trying to envision what it was going to look like. So that, but I'm, I'm in support of this project, so I have no problems with it.
Now, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Conley. I saved up a few questions here that maybe you can help me with on technical. To the congregation that's here tonight, thank you for coming. It's really nice to see you here, and we appreciate all that you do in the community, because you really not only benefit your own members, but helping others at large in the community is, is really appreciated. I'd like to, first question's on the type of building. After I met first with Mr. Silvato, Pastor Silvato, I think I went up to Corona to see a project that you, Calvary had built there that was a very impressive-looking tilt-up. Is this similar in style and design? Is this a tilt-up building?
You want to?
Huh?
I don't know, he's looking at.
Yes.
It looked familiar.
It would be. The architect is here tonight. He can address that if you'd like. But my understanding is that these would be tilt-up buildings.
And similar to what they built in Corona?
I haven't seen a facility in Corona.
Well, that was an impressive project, so I was glad to see that. I'm concerned about details. As, as I've watched your congregation grow, I, I believe that parking and traffic control and things like that become a concern to not only your families, but to the community. So North Avenue is already an impacted street, and as Mr., the one gentleman spoke, Mr. Amori, it's difficult now with the school in there, as well as the traffic coming through from Oceanside. What is the traffic circulation on the site as it relates to people coming and going? What are the, is it primarily off of Melrose, and will North, for example, be only people exiting? And will it be a right turn only, or what conditions are imposed there?
The circulation for the property would be addressed through a circulation plan that we're requiring as a condition of approval to address student drop-off and pickup. We haven't required anything for the church use, because it being on Sunday, we don't expect that there'll be a lot of traffic problems on the surrounding streets. During the weekdays for school, we expect that the main driveway on Melrose will be the primary access in and out of the site. The driveway on North Avenue would be stop-controlled at the point of access on a North Avenue. But our perspective at this time is that it would serve only as a secondary access. They are required to submit a circulation plan for staff's approval before they can occupy the site, and that's how we intend to control it.
Okay. You mentioned in the school, I see in the, in the documents that they project possibly 1,000 students at some point in time. Using Goheem Park Academy as an example of where we had possible misunderstandings of drop-off and pickup. What is the plan? Is it all inside the site, or is some going to be allowed on Melrose or North Avenue?
All of the student drop-off and pickup will be required to occur inside the site within their parking area. We'll have to regulate that as needed, but from the staff perspective, there will not be any pickup or drop-off permitted on Melrose or North Avenue.
Okay. And with a sanctuary of 1,700 and 700 parking spaces, or 750 in that, that range available to them, is there parking outs, off-site, should that be needed? And if so, how's that accessed?
There is no proposed parking off-site. Our code requires for a church use a parking ratio of three spaces per every fixed seat. Their sanctuary is going to accommodate a little less than 1,700 people, and they have provided parking to accommodate that number on-site. So we don't frankly expect any parking deficiency unless there's some kind of special event in which they'll have to obtain approval from the city for off-site parking.
Okay. And I'm sure with the gas situation solver, the pastor will be promoting carpooling. And the Sprinter, the Sprinter looks like it's, it could be quite an asset for you. In, in the documents, you're referring to Planning Case 14-248, but without specificity. What is that, and where is it?
That is an industrial development that is shown, I don't have a pointer here. It's shown in the, as a big vacant site that's just on the southwest side.
Running on North?
Yes, sir.
On North. And what, what is proposed there?
It's a six-lot industrial subdivision, and they are required to do some improvements at the intersection of North and Melrose, which is going to be shared with the church.
Okay. Do you perceive there's any conflict of usage with the church that would disrupt their services, or?
From the existing uses in the area?
Each other?
No.
No, none? Okay, thank you. I think I, I feel fairly strongly that any North Avenue improvements shouldn't, and it's probably called out, and I've missed it, but should be completed before the church has occupancy, so that we aren't trying to do that after people are trying to get in and off the site.
That was agreed to at the planning commission, as included in their conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. The industrial building, are you going to segregate the property and set up a separate parcel number for that?
That's correct. That's proposed as part of this application.
And although the church doesn't plan to use it at this time, could the church possibly, if they worked out something that Mr. Hammond acquired at a future time?
That was also something that was discussed at the planning commission, and a condition was included to prohibit the church from occupying the industrial building.
Okay, because that raises the question, and the audience should know I'm interested in economics, that we would lose tax revenue should the, another property go off tax rolls. Okay. Then, community use of the sports fields with a potential for 1,000 students on-site, has there been any discussion of the, how the church would share sports fields with the community?
The church has indicated that they are open to sharing their sports field with the community. I don't know that we've gotten in any more detail than that.
Which I think is very generous, and we certainly need all the sports fields we can have access to. So thank you for that. And then, are there any issues regarding compatibility with surrounding uses? For example, would Lee Iron Metals possibly be disruptive to this use, or?
We evaluated the potential for hazardous material and air quality contamination with respect to the existing industrial uses in the environmental impact report. It identified that none of the existing uses in that area would create any problem with respect to the school use. There may be some noise from surrounding traffic, the Sprinter, the industrial uses in that area, but considering that the church has selected this location, and they see what's around, I'm sure that they understand that those are potential compatibility issues for them.
Okay. And are they aware of the Sprinter and, and the impact it'll be coming by every 30 minutes, and by federal law required to blow its little horn?
I think they are now.
They are now? I don't think.
You're funny tonight, Dan.
Big Ben, okay. Now, now, I don't want you all to hate me, but I had a conversation with the pastor and at least one or two of the elders of the church, you may recall, and that had to do with the use of your existing site. And that is, when it was put into church use, it came off the tax rolls. And now another 20.9 acre site, less whatever the industrial parcel is, will be coming off the tax rolls. Granted, they're not, we're not getting much in the way of taxes now from a bear field, and we're welcoming your use, at least I personally do. But you made a commitment to me, not only once, but more than once, that you would revert the existing facility back to commercial use. How can we memorialize that as part of this agreement? And I have several suggestions, but maybe Mr. Conley has some suggestions even. Because I think that's an important thing for us.
We talked about it from the staff perspective. One of the things that we could One of the things that we could consider would be requiring a condition of approval on this use permit, that upon occupancy of their new facility, that they would nullify their existing use permit for the property on East Fistaway and agree to sell it to a tax-producing user. However, upon discussing that with the church, they have some concerns about that and probably ask the pastor to address that.
Any of the pastor would like to speak to that?
You know, our desire is to do, you know, that which would be good and right for our city. The thing that's a struggle with this, and I do recall Mr. Campbell meeting with you several years ago when we did, you know, propose a willingness to entertain that option and that idea. The struggle for us that's difficult with this is that, you know, we are in a situation as well where financially to sell that building is going to fund a lot of this project and, you know, if we were able to sell it as a church, it would be, it would be a lot more, probably two, one point five or two million dollars more for us and versus, I'd love it, I mean, I'd love to, my heart would be, we'll sell it to whoever wants to pay the most for it, you know? But, you know, this is something that wasn't brought up in our conditions and kind of has come, is a little bit of a surprise tonight, so I'm not sure how to respond without seeking some counsel, to be honest with you.
Oh, good. I wouldn't have brought it up had I not felt that that was a, we talked about it several times and it was, what I felt was a commitment from you and the church to pursue that, realizing in the interim, you've had offers and people considering uses for church uses, which are certainly admirable, but the concern again is there's a, an issue of taxation that unfortunately that's the city requires a tax base to provide services. And that would be my concern. I don't know what that valuation is in terms of potential commercial use per square foot or the like, so I'm at a loss in terms of knowing how to pursue that further.
On the what?
Your current site.
Oh, what the value is?
It has a, you know, potential reasonably expected value per square foot in terms of value. I don't know what that is as a commercial site, but it certainly has an impact on the city's tax, on our usage of the site, number one, rejuvenation of that district area to commercially use. And that was certainly when we first met, that was one of the conditions that caused me to want to support your project, was your commitment to doing that. Mayor, I don't know how else to pursue that.
I don't know, but I agree with you. I know that I've had several conversations with people, I think from your church, as well as potential buyers, and I've indicated each time I've talked to them that I would never support another church going in on that site simply because of the, what Mr. Campbell's talked about in terms of the, of the commercial value or the tax base that we are missing. To be honest with you, I remember when the church was first went there, the staff did not support the church going there in the first place along there and taking that commercial property, but it was adopted, or the permit was adopted and it was approved, but I would have a hard time voting again for any kind of another use of a church at that site because I think, again, we're too dependent on the tax base for providing services for your church and for everyone else in the community. And so, I hope that you give some kind of consideration to our wishes on that, for that, Mr. Campbell?
Oh, Mr. Turney, Mr. Piper, what, I think we're all very supportive of this project, but I'm personally concerned about that condition. I certainly can't speak for the rest of the council. What are the options you see before us here?
Well, obviously, one option is to approve the project without any concrete conditions and if your concern is that that property not continue as a church after the construction of the new facility, then I couldn't recommend doing that because you really have no guarantees at that point. I think the appropriate, the most appropriate way to obtain the protection that you and the mayor at least appear to be interested in is to have a release of the current property from its special dispensation. And I would think that unless there's a majority that wants to take final action tonight and certainly understanding that the pastor probably wants to get some advice before agreeing to do this, that you not conclude the public hearing, but resolve all of the remaining questions, if any there be, and simply continue the public hearing to the next meeting when that specific issue could then be resolved and at that point, you can take whatever action you think is appropriate.
Okay. Of course, Mr. Campbell and I are two members of the city council and it's a five-member council, so the others would have to make that decision for themselves. I have absolutely no problems with the project itself. I think that it'll be a fine addition to the community. I did have one question of Mr. Conley, and that is, is that I think I read somewhere where there is going to be an improvement on a turn lane on North coming off of Melrose. Is that true?
That's correct, Mayor. There's a, the eastbound approach to Melrose would be widened to accommodate some additional turn pocket length, which is a condition on the industrial project that will be shared with the church.
Yeah, I have a lot of concern about North. It's just not a very good street, but there's not a lot we can do about it right now and so, in some cases, you have to live with it. Mr. Lopez, did you have further comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see here two different, two different issues here. One is your, is the building that you were working on and number two is the part that you brought in, Mr. Campbell, about your special use permit that they have. Originally, well, not originally, but a while back, I sat in some meetings where you wanted to continue to leave it as a church. Obviously, the value would be more, probably a little more as a church, but I would support your church where it's going, so you can call it a home. That's your home. But I cannot support continuing to leave your present church as a church because that's a commercial. And you did get a special use permit there years ago and we will be, like Mr. Campbell said, we will be taking tax dollar away from that new facility that you have. And I think that, that we have two different issues here and I believe that, and I, what I understood, that having the new church was automatically going to go back to the commercial, the old church. And I'm glad that Mr. Campbell brought this in. Might as well settle this now and that way we don't waste time, but I, I just cannot support the old church staying as a church. I'm very sorry with that, but I will support your new church and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
It's quite a dilemma, actually, and I understand where you're coming from because I work in commercial real estate and I've actually tried to find some places for a couple of churches, so I, you know, and I do know that it's worth more as a church, the property is, but, you know, and I keep analyzing, well, is that a good place for retail, you know, you know, that area, but they just, you know, we did that whole shopping center right adjacent there and so, but I'm wondering if we ever have the same thing with North Coast Church because they're in that industrial area and that's the church that I attend and, you know, they're moving into a new place too, so I wonder if we aren't gonna have the same dilemma there in that industrial park, so. But I understand your dilemma and, but, you know, and I was also there when you guys, originally a long time ago, you said you put it back into, you know, retail use, so it's tough, but, and I know that it's worth quite a bit more as a church actually than it would be as retail, so I don't know how to help you, but if I can in some way, let me know.
Find us a buyer.[1254.33][1254.33](laughter) What'd he say?
Find a buyer.
Mr. Gronky?
Thank you. You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna save my decision on this one simply because I don't know exactly your financial conditions, whether or not you need to sell it as a church in order to make this happen or whether you need to sell a church just to get additional amenities on this property. So, I mean, if it comes down to the fact that you have to sell it as a church site in order to open up this site and build your sanctuary, then I probably will go along with you, but, you know, if it just means additional things that you can do to the site of money that you could have, you know, for future development and then probably, and I too, just like Mr. Campbell and the mayor and the rest on this council, have had conversations with members of your church and was understanding, in fact, I walked, I walked in and I got an assumption that that would be reverted back to commercial property, so, I mean, that's the understanding I had. So, I'll save my decision on that, but we'll see what your finances come out of.
Can I speak to that?
I'm sorry?
Can I respond to that?
Oh, sure, please.
We, we need to be able to get as much out of it as we possibly can in order to make the move work. We actually haven't shopped our church at all, really. We've had a lot of interest, though. We've had people that have come to us. We have tried, I don't know if Ross Granos is here tonight, but he's the commercial guy with Hammond Construction and he's tried to find some interested people, commercial-wise, and so far, I mean, over the last year, hasn't come up with anybody. And so, you know, we're, like I said, I mean, I'd love that, you know, I'd love that and I, I do remember our conversation and I think the language that we, you know, used was that we would be willing to do that and I do believe, you know, the Bible says to, that your yes be yes and your no be no and I want to stand, you know, by that, but, you know, I also agree with what Mr. Piper said that as far as this decision and me making this decision alone tonight, that's not how we do things, you know, at our church and I, because it wasn't on the conditions in coming here, we were unprepared to even entertain this conversation, so we might need to request a contingency till next time.
I think that it's been pretty well stated by all members of the city council that we find basically no problem with your, with your proposal to us tonight in the sense of locating the church on this particular site and we all feel that it'd be an asset to the community there. And I think that if it does come back, that do we even need to discuss the approvals again or can we just talk about the one condition?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you don't need to recross any ground that you've already covered tonight. You can, if people from the audience wish to speak on that, then we would of course let them do that because the public hearing will still be open, but really all you'll need to handle from your perspective and hopefully from the perspective of the church is the one issue.
Okay, very good. I think we all understand your dilemma and, but then again, it's not our responsibility to make the most money for your, to sell that property. It's our responsibility for the general community and I think that's what we're trying, we're honestly trying to do, is to provide, hopefully, because that whole corridor seems to be changing right now.
It's exciting.
It's very exciting and I think that that's an excellent opportunity for some additional commercial along there. So, with that, Mr. Campbell, would you like to make the motion since you're...
I move for a continuous without prejudice to hold open the public hearing for a, I think that Mr. Conley with you and the pastor would come back and set a date for this. Date to be determined?
Certainly. No, I think we need to continue to a date certain, otherwise we'd have to renotice the public hearing, so I would recommend that you either continue it to the next meeting and you can continue it again after that if you're not ready.
You should be ready by the...
I would thank you.
Okay, to the next...
When is the next meeting?[1565.13][1565.13](laughter)
Fourteen days from...
Two weeks.
Twenty-third of October.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second to that motion?
Motion again.
It was to continue the public...
The whole, the whole...
Yes.
Do we have to...
We don't have to discuss the rest of it.
The EIR and can we, you know, and that or not? For them, so we get some of it out of the way?
Yes, you actually, well, if, no, if we're going to...
I don't think you can.
No, no, we can't.
Yeah, okay.
No, I think we need to consider the whole package at once because of the fact that we could take an action tonight and then based on that action, they could assume certain things and I think that we need to not put ourselves in that position, that we need to be able to hold, you know, or do the public hearing on the whole matter at the time.
Well, I was just trying to save it so everybody'd have to come back and talk again and, you know, go through this whole thing, so if we have the one issue...
They don't need to.
They don't need to. Well, no, I'm not even gonna say that because, you know, I don't want to ever have people not come to a meeting and then have us do something and they say, well, we weren't there. So, please, feel free to come back and hopefully it'll be just a short meeting and we'll be able to iron this out. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion and the second. Any further discussion? Okay, please cast your votes. Yes? Okay, and that is unanimous, so we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you, Rob.
Tell him I go to the bathroom.
Frank is taking a break.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break and then we'll continue. Could we get the speakers on, please? Do you think we could get Judy Ritter to come back to the dais so that we could begin our meeting?
I heard you had the TV.
Okay, we are going to go back to public hearing number one, which is San Clemente Avenue reimbursement district. And so, let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Donna Snyder and I'm with the consulting firm PMC, which was retained by the city to process the reimbursement district for the San Clemente Avenue improvements. On August 28th, council approved a resolution declaring its intent to establish the reimbursement district as set tonight for the public hearing. Tonight's action, if approved after taking testimony, represents the final step in the establishment of the district. The resolution would set the boundary of the district and the charges, as well as approve agreements with TRC Development Corp., which is doing business as Avalon Homes, and an agreement with Mr. Natoff. PMC recommends approval of 1.4 million dollars in costs, of which 40% may be eligible for reimbursement via the district. In addition, the city has over $133,000 on deposit from in-lu fees previously collected. At the August meeting, council directed staff to disperse the in-lu fees in a manner consistent with the cost allocation set forth in the engineer's report for the district. The district would run for 20 years according to your city code. 5% of the fees collected would be retained by the city to offset its costs, and the agreements contain provisions for full payment of consultant costs. The unpaid charges set forth in the engineer's report increased by 7% per year based on your code. Since preparation of the final engineer's report, one additional property owner has paid the charge and only five properties remain to pay at this time. Payment of the charge would be triggered by issuance of a building permit for an additional or second dwelling unit or subdivision of land. That concludes my report.
Okay, are there any questions of the consultant from the council? We have no speakers that I've got notice on. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, the public hearing is open, and so seeing none, and if there are no questions, do we have a motion?
I'll move. I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution, staff resolution, and appropriating the funds for reimbursement.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. If there are no further questions, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes unanimously.
Yay.
Okay, let's go back. Okay, we're going back to item number D4. Boy, I get a star for being able to just keep track of this agenda tonight. No, D4 is before D3.
It is?
Yes, if you'd have listened to the, approval of the agenda. Okay.
Good job, you guys.
Mr. Lopez has to excuse himself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Tom Gardner, Director of Finance. Lawrence Pierce, Director of Engineering, is also joining me here this evening for the CIP items. Am I talking correctly? This evening, we have segregated capital improvement project relating to the Santa Fei area improvements. This is a redevelopment agency project and it can be found on page 121 of your CIP plan. This was a prior action by the council back in June of 2005, I guess established this, that was before, before my time. It, it's appropriation level, it's project number 8001, and it's combined capital project for $78,310 in the fiscal year 70708. It has some carryover funds from the previous year, so its total available balance will be $825,000. If you have any questions regarding this particular item, it is an item of the Community Development Commission.
Just a correction is that this was established as a project much longer, or much before 2005. Thank you.
Mr. Gronky?
I don't know how much this is related to this particular item, but I know that this council's been working on this project for a long time. And in fact, I think a couple of years ago, we went through the public input process of which we paid a consultant quite a bit of money in order to gain insight to exactly what to do with this particular area. The money that we spent on that, is that still going to be used for this project, or is that money that was spent and now lost?
Absolutely will be used on this project, and in fact, the new redevelopment director, Mr. Rawlings, has reconvened the meeting with the consultants and has those options that were presented to council before, is looking at refining those options more with the hydrology report finished and in hand, and provides more latitude to the council for what you can do based on the hydrology report. So we'll hopefully see a lot of activity on this project in 2007 and '08.
Good. Without getting into too much detail of the hydrology report, really, this, this project has been around for decades.
Yes, it has.
And really kind of sat there because of some of the water conditions and so forth.
There'd be long before the FEMA concerns.
It did.
So now that, now that FEMA is, will be satisfied through some of our documentation.
We hope they will. We will submit, yes.
And improvements, we'll be able to move along with this one.
We'll submit a conditional letter of map provision. It's called a CLOMER, and simultaneously, while we submit that letter, we will be working on the environmental impact report, specific plan, and the design of potential modifications to the options council has already seen.
If I recall, the last time we visited this, we really didn't come to any kind of resolution on exactly what the design of the street and mercantile would be, so it, we'll have to come back to council and make that final determination?
Right.
Okay.
Well, any revisions. There was some discussion, there wasn't a final option chosen because we were still waiting for issues with hydrology.
Okay, okay.
Yes, it will be exciting to come back and.
Oh, well, it needs to be addressed, and, and I'm glad to see that we're moving along with it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? Mr. Campbell?
Are there speakers in the public?
Nope.
Should I move to close the public hearing and move for adoption of Community Development Commission resolution approving the capital improvement plan for South Santa Fe?
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, and that is approved unanimously of those present, and Mr. Lopez was unable to vote. Okay, the next item would, we'll go back to number D3.
Item B3 is actually six actions by the council, the Community Development Commission, and the Buena Sanitation District. The first three are acts to unappropriate or deappropriate funds, and these are summarized on pages eight and in greater detail on pages nine, 10, 11 of the CIP report. In terms of the general fund, the deappropriations are about 400,000. The largest is some street projects and some sewer projects. When we deappropriate, we don't move the money from fund to fund, it goes back into the original fund and then it's re-appropriated on later projects. But for us to fund the future, we sometimes close out old projects and take those resources and move them forward. So those will be part of the actions of the council this evening. And again, the CIP will represent both the city CIP, the Community Development Commission CIP, and the Buena Sanitation District. What we have in terms of total appropriations for '07 and '08 and '08, '09 are summarized here in the summary. We're looking at approximately 15.5 or 15.6 million in street projects. There are also almost, I think, 10 million in prior year funds, which are also being carried forward in terms of overall CIPs. Signalization has about a $600,000 program in the first year, redevelopment about a similar-sized program less in later years. One of the things that you see of the greatest importance in terms of both the number, the numbers here, is again, the community projects, they're showing up here under fire safety at 11 million, that's our, the activity of building and improving fire stations one, five, and six. That'll be occurring early, as opposed to the park and recreation, which is the Moonlight, and public facilities, which you see at 23, which is the city hall and civic center. So those are why you see the, the significant shifts in, in resources here. Also, in terms of the Buena wastewater, I believe that's a forced main project in the first year that is completed and not carried to the second year. This is kind of a fund chart, and you don't get to see this very often, council, and it'll disappear as the years pass, but essentially, this is your Prop L funds being expended for appropriations. In the general fund, we'll be looking at 19 and 53 million respectively. That's a sizable amount, and those are for the community projects that we mentioned earlier. This summary is by fund type, and you can see that we get our resources from a fair amount of areas, but you don't normally see that much in the general fund. Significant differences from prior years is the large general fund commitment using Prop L resources, establishment of specific street maintenance projects for each of these years, they're in approximately four and a half million. Mr. Pierce will be summarizing those in a minute, totaling 9.2 million over the two years. We also have a sanitation master plan, which will be presented to the council later, and with that master plan, we'll update and make adjustments to the CIP. So right now, we're a little bit short on water or wastewater projects as we're trying to finalize that master plan. New projects include, as I indicated, the fire stations one, five, and six, improvements to one, new five and six, the community parks, Forest Field, Moonlight, city hall, and civic center, about 95.6 million in the first two years. Now, we'll have a third year that'll be the last year, and most of the, a lot of the civic center will be in that last year. This will be financed through long-term financing, and we'll be bringing back to the council a proposal on how to do that, and we'll pay off that debt over, you know, the next 30 years. on how to do that, and we'll pay off that debt over, you know, the next 30 years.
I won't be around.
I think Mr. Pierce would like to take a minute and review with you some of the important street projects.
And before he speaks, I just have to add, this is the most exciting capital improvement budget that I've ever been able to lay my hands on, and you all know how I love budgets. So this is very, very exciting. And just before we detail that is, is that on the street projects is that, you'll note that we've been talking a lot about the 9, about $9.2 million. It displays there 16 million, or less than, I'm sorry, 14 million in projects for over the two years, but that includes many other multiple projects that we've had ongoing and continue, will continue on. But there is $9 million more committed than what you've had in the past, or the total that we'll be spending just on streets, on arterials primarily, overlaying construction. And then after Mr. Pierce finishes, we'll spend a minute on the capital, the community capital projects.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'd like just to highlight a couple of projects that are in the streets. West Vista Way's been a long-term project that we have had on the books, and we are going to continue to work on that. In fact, I think it was last Friday, Councilman Campbell, you were at the Sandag meeting, and I think we got $250,000 earmarked to this project from the federal set-aside funds that we have been working with Mr. Ice's office over the last year or so. So that panned out a little bit more money out of there. So what we're going to be spending money initially right now, why we're looking for other money, is we're going to be doing two traffic signals on West Vista Way, one at Emerald and one at Grapevine. That's where we'll be spending the initial money. The street and rehab project, 80 dash, or 8037 is the follow-up project that we have been working on, or we're currently working on right now, and we will be working on the second phase. Currently, we're working on Sycamore right now. Veil Terrace, we just paved the intersection at South Santa Fe and Escondido in the last week. We'll be paving the intersection at West Vista Way and Melrose. And then the Foothill Drive piece, we did the first initial piece with this, with another project, and we will be finishing the other two pieces, two or three pieces that are above Veil Terrace and completing that project. Then on to what the city manager was talking about was the projects for Escondido Avenue, and that will be the enhancements to the median. We'll be replacing the left, double-left turn lanes with landscape medians. That project is virtually done in design, and we will be out to bid next month on that project. The street rehab projects, as the city manager says, we're going to be concentrating on arterials for the next two years, and the reason that we'll be able to do $9.2 million is we've got, as you saw earlier, there was a $3 million, a million and a half each year from Prop 1B funds, as well as $450,000 from Prop 42 funds, as well as year-end fund balance commitment for another $1 million each year. So that has, along with the transnet money that we have normally been using, that will augment, and we will be able to put out some very large paving contracts. On project 8154, which is the '07, '08 project, we're going to basically tackle the entire length of Melrose, north to south, and pick up all of the bad sections. There's a couple of good sections in there, but we'll be concentrating on that. The other streets we'll be looking at, working on, are Bobier, North Drive, and that's from the west city limit to Melrose, through the section you just talked about as part of the Calvary Chapel Church will be an overlay project in that area. And then North Santa Fe area will be also paving. And then the last project, the '08, '09 project, we'll be looking at doing paving on University Avenue, Business Park, Hacienda Drive, Crescent Drive, Arcadia, Osborne, Townsite Drive, Alta Vista Drive, and Beaumont Drive, which are all classified as arterials or collectors. And that concludes my report on the streets.
Very good. That's exciting, that really is. I've never seen the CIP budget for the city of Vista that's included so much, and it's just, it's stuff that's really needed in this community, and it'll bring our street system back to where it's good again.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Pierce a question. I feel that they're doing a great job here in Vista with our roads are getting better compared to what they were years ago. But in all your figures, did you anticipate that in the near future here, that asphalt will cost a lot more than, in the future, it'll be a lot more? Are you anticipating that the extra costs there?
We're trying to anticipate it the best we can. And we have escalated our numbers. One of the things we have seen, we saw a large boost in asphalt prices a year ago, and some of that has recovered some, that some of the prices have dropped. Our bid prices also are coming in better, and it's mostly because of the competition that's out there. With the housing market going down, down the hill, there are more now, more contractors out there looking for work and are ready to bid, public works jobs. So as our competition on bids goes up, our prices go down, and we actually can get more work done. So we're trying to anticipate as much as we can with our crystal ball and look into the future and anticipate the process, at least getting as close as we can at this time.
You're saying with less housing going in, less development that way, that the prices will stabilize and you'll be able to do more of the streets?
Actually, we're getting, our bid prices are coming down.
Okay.
And it's not just us. It is other agencies, as I talk to other city engineers, they're seeing their bid prices coming down. And we're, in the last few years, we would be lucky to get one or two bids, maybe three bids if we were really lucky on a project. We're getting four and five and six bids now, and seven bids.
Well, I'm glad we're doing this now, and I'm glad we're doing our capital projects, and I think maybe we'll get a better price. Good planning on the city's part. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any more from Mr. Gardner?
No more. We have some more related to CIP, but no more on street.
Okay, very good.
I just have a quick comment for Mr. Pierce. I want to thank you for scheduling Santa Fe at Escondido Avenue at night. You really relieved the congestion that might have occurred had that been attempted at any, I think you started like at 10 o'clock?
Yes.
And that really helped, and it was a nice job. Thank you.
It turned out real nice. Mr. Gronky?
Just two things. Mr. Abel referred to earlier that there will be no signal at Phillips when the Sprinter comes through?
Yes, it will be, it will be there.
It will be there.
Yeah, in fact...
Are you saying that the Sprinter's never going to come through? Or else they're going to do a real fast job in getting that signal in?
The design is done. The foundations are poured. The traffic signal standards, we're actually laying in the area where the parking lot is, now been graded, and they are now waiting to stage to erect those signals. So all the materials are here on hand.
The second question deals with grade separation. Are we prepared to do a survey as soon as that Sprinter comes through to see exactly the impact on traffic and whether grade separation is necessary in Escondido Avenue?
We will be monitoring this. The one thing that we have talked about is, our biggest fear is going to be the preemption as they get the line up, and how does it, how does the traffic signals deal with the signals that come off the rail line? And how can we interface that? We've been working with NCTD to try to understand how all of that's going to work and put the best plan in place so that we've got the right time, the right amount of clearance. Our biggest challenge is getting a semi across the track, getting the signals to shut down, and getting a semi across the track before the train comes through. That's the critical scenario there.
Gosh.
And we're trying, we've got everything, we've worked out as best we can with NCTD. I know Sam Marcos and us have been working together as long with Oceanside, and we need to put it in place and test it. That's where we are now. And then we're going to continue to make adjustments on the rest of the way down the line.
So basically, you're hoping that you'll be able to do a synchronization in such a way that grade separation won't be necessary?
I'm not saying that.
Okay. And so, but you did say you don't want a semi and a train in the same place at the same time?
I don't want those in the same place at the same time.
All right, Mr. Lopez?
Well, I appreciate you doing it at night because you're, for the traffic purpose, but it did keep me up quite a bit of the night. I could hear those factors going, so, you know, but you did a great job, though. Thank you.
Thank you for your indulgence.
This is ritter.
One more thing on the Sprinter. My biggest, my biggest worry is on Vista Village Drive, because I keep watching people, and no matter where you're painting those lines, they stop underneath the arms. Arms are back further, and the cars, even though they're not stopping on the tracks, they're stopping this side of it, they're still stopping underneath those arms.
That's going to happen just once.
One time to one person, then the next light, the next person, you know.
No.
I don't know if we need to put a sign or something back, you know, here, something that knows the arms up there, because I don't think, I mean, honestly, if you, every time I see it, there's people parked under there at the, for the lights, and...
When the Sprinter comes through, they'll get the message really fast.
Well, I know, but I'm just afraid it'll break the arms off a few times first. So there's got to be some way we can show them where they need to stop, because they come around the corner from Olive on there, and then they park right there, and then people creep forward, and it's just...
They're called white lines.
I know the white lines, but you go park there and watch them. I'm watching them come through here. I'm telling you, the people aren't looking.
All right, Mrs. Geller?
A number of council members had some questions about the community capital improvement projects, and when you add them all together, that it was exceeded the $100 million that we talked about. And in discussing that, I was pointing out that there was a carry-forward monies in many situations of where we've been working on a number of these projects for years. Council had allotted $4.5 million over the years just for Civic Center, and that's included in there. So all spending on all of, all those projects is included. There's some fire protection fees. There's money from a prior project on Station 1 remodel and ADA accessibility. There are grants. There are also park fees, and as I said, the general fund money allotted. So it's, it's under $108 million that's listed, it's about $108 million that's listed in the, if you add all of the community capital projects together. It will be bond, it's still in the $100 million that we talked about originally for all of the projects. And again, those are detailed, ad nauseam in the, in each of the capital improvement projects pages on, in those, and you'll see bond proceeds listed for anything associated with the community capital projects.
Mrs. Geller, could you remind us, though, of the reserves that are required as part of the bonding process that create that larger number?
Mr. Gardner has that exact number.
When you do the kind of lease bonds, which we're doing, there are certain requirements for different kinds of reserves. And what we'll do is, the current plan as of last week is that the bond proceeds will be about $116 million, and then about $3.6 million from what we call the premium sales of bonds, so $119, okay? Out of that, two different kinds of reserves will be set up. A capital interest reserve for $13.5 million. We have to also set up enough cash to pay off some of the 1997 debt, and that'll be there. We'll also have a debt service, a debt service reserve fund of $9.9. We'll go through all of this with me again when we do the debt service allocation. Now, those reserves will be used up through the course of both the construction period and/or the final debt. For instance, the debt service reserve will pay off your last payments 30 years down the line. In the interim, you'll use the interest off those reserves to pay down part of the debt each year, and you'll also use them for part of the construction during the construction period. So we're trying to maximize the use of those reserves by generating interest, and when we generate the interest, we're going to put that towards the construction project. And for the later reserves, we'll put that towards the debt service. So while we have those reserves, we'll be maximizing the use of them.
Thank you, sir. Just some people are trying to equate this, those numbers in terms of cost per square foot, in terms of how we do it to do a commercial building, which generally they aren't including debt service and that type of thing, which we're having to do as part of our bonding procedure here.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Marcy, can we turn the volume up just a little bit?
I might need to have him speaking right in again. I'll try. Would you like to do it?
I think you better turn it down just a shade. It's a little too high.
Just a little, a bit better.
All right.
Okay.
You bet. Are you done, Mr. Pierce?
No.
Oh.
I have, I actually forgot one thing to talk about streets. Not only will we be doing capital improvement projects, but part of the money that we have allocated in that $9.2 million will be going to Public Works. So you're going to see more of our Public Works crews out on the street, doing some of the paving on the, on our residential streets and on our other streets, so that we can balance where we're paving, because we're going to go after arterials, and we want to be able to balance that out with what else is going on in the city and be able to bring all of our roadways up the best we can to a higher grade.
Mr. Pierce, on page 95 of the CIP, it talks about the Thibodeau curb and beautification project. Can you give us a little more information about that?
This project is going, we're going to install curb and gutter and landscaping along the, I'll call it the east side of Thibodeau, between Thibodeau and the freeway from Mar Vista down to, oh, and I can't think of the building down at the bottom of the hill.
That's a building. Generalized building.
Yes, yes. And this is a joint project with, with the Caltrans people. We're going to be using Caltrans water and irrigation system, and we're going to be landscaping it and putting the curbs in, as well as doing some street improvements. So this, this will help beautify that entrance into that area off Mar Vista.
Is there anyone in the audience that was the person that was responsible for getting us to do this project?
And I think Mr. Van, or Mr. Les is, yeah.
All right. Mr. Jans, thank you very much for pushing us on this project.
I'd like to thank the city, and I'd like, they deserve the credit, and I thank you for spending reservations. You're surely happy at 85 years old or something, appointed as a beautification commissioner. I didn't want to pay bill or design ladders, so I took this on as a project, and you're appointing somebody, somebody for the beautification committee. Just somebody representing the city gave you a business card so you could go to work. So anything you can do to encourage public participation, give them the authority to go, is the best thing for the community.
Great, thank you.
I learned, I learned one thing, though. First off, it perseveres, and second thing is that squeaky wheel gets the breeze, I think that goes through, and the last one is that you get more flights, has more flights with honey, and it's a good project.
Thank you. We have some people that would like to speak.
On that?
Not on that one particular project, no, but on the CIP.
Oh, okay.
Did you want to say something?
I just wondered, no, were you going to put a sidewalk along the side of that, or what?
No.
No, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we had three people that made out a request to speak that couldn't remain, and they are from the South Vista communities. And what they were requesting was something that was not on the CIP, and that's a sidewalk from, what?
Green Oak.
From Green Oak to...
From Shatterridge to Green Oak.
From Shatterridge to Green Oak.
And then they were requesting it being in the unfunded.
So what we did is, I mentioned to them that since they couldn't be here, that we would pass this on to staff with a request that there be some information given back as to the funding availability and the cost and so forth. So we'll turn that over to staff and... And last but not least, Mr. Abel?
Number of items, good to see you again. First of all, sidewalks. If I could, the time that I didn't get to speak last time when you were talking about setting goals and whatever, metrics are important. And we've got, you've got four or five sidewalk projects, including Thibodeau in here, but there's no, there's no, how many feet are we talking about? Collect that data. Collect that data, something you can boast about afterwards.
Okay.
It's, it's, throughout this whole document, there are items like that, that, hey, let's, let's collect the data, let's count, and next year, we'll, we'll have information.
That's a good point.
This document is two-hundred-and-sixty-seven pages long, and I downloaded it, and there are page numbers when I printed it. So, we did something right in that case.
Thank you.
I would like to, I think I have enough copies, but I'd like to show this copy if I could. Somebody can handle that.
Marcy, can we? Mr. Gardner, that's the one that goes there, so they can see.
That's not yours.
There you go. Almost, almost nobody can see it, okay.
Need to bring it up a little closer.
Nope.
Now, we need to get it in focus.
Now, we need to focus.
Other way.
What I've done is I went back a year in the Propell...
There we go.
Propell documents, and compared it to where we are today with this document. The Civic Center was forty million dollars. This document says it's fifty-five million dollars. That's a thirty-eight percent increase, Lord knows why. One of the items that did go up, there was two million dollars in the budget for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. That's now three and a half million dollars. The fire stations, they were referred to as South Melrose and Core. Now, they have numbers, number five and number six. The, what's now Station Five went from five million to eight point nine million, and what's now Station Number Six went from eight million to nine and a half million. One of the interesting things about the document is that, even though we're talking about nine heads in each fire station, nine, nine people, right? The fixtures, furniture, and equipment down on South Melrose is only fifty-one thousand dollars a head, and here downtown, near downtown, it's a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a head. And if, if I'm gonna operate in one of these fire stations, I guess I wanna be in number six. I don't make these numbers up, they're right out of your book, but they, they do beg the question. Further, the, the question needs to be asked, are we spending our money prudently? And all I can do is ask. And I'll, I'll be here as you spend our money, and contrary to what Mr. Gardner's might have said, maybe thirty years is not the right answer to the question. That's an entire generation, and if we can pay this thing off in twenty, we owe it to that generation to do just that. Thank you.
Before you go, I think Mrs. Gelder would like to respond.
When, when all of the estimates were put together, as we had stated, that those were just exactly what they were, estimates, so that's why at the bottom of any of those pages where you extrapolated those original numbers, like five million for the South Melrose Station, and nine million for the Core Station, those were, were without any contingencies whatsoever, they were just a, a number that we had put in together, but the, the funding has always remained at a hundred million. And then what I detailed earlier this evening was the, that hundred million plus additional funds carried over in other projects. So, they, they've always been at those approximate same amounts. The total for all the projects still remains the same at a hundred million, plus the, the infusion of other park fees, fire protection fees, and general fund monies set aside. So, they're, they're, as far as the Proposition L and the bond, it is still listed at the same amount. The original sheets that we had, we, we had this, you know, large number underneath that said contingency, you know, unknown, which was, I think, a minimum of twenty percent. So, it, it still adds up to the same number, we just distributed it accordingly as, as the plans were, and designs came in, specifications, and we were able to finally get something firm, and we'll, certainly won't have absolute numbers until we bid the projects. But you're correct, they're different, the contingencies have now been taken from the bottom of the page and added up in the top. With respect to the FFNE, I'd have to talk to the project managers about that and see what, I'm not quite sure if I'm following that, those costs, but we'll be happy to get back to you and, and look at those, and make that explanation to council, too. Certainly, as we go through the projects, we will be doing that at every, at every juncture. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abel. Okay, any further questions, comments? Slowly, slow with...
Just one comment. I just wanna thank you for making this so easy to understand, you know, the book and everything, and the way you presented all the projects, but made it very easy to understand, and I, I wanna thank you for all that.
Well, I wanna thank all the people that made this possible. This is my first budget for the City Council in terms of two-year budget. Laura Johnson, who's sitting beside me, does a great deal, almost all of the detailed work that you see on the pages. Been working very hard on layout, and as we discussed with the council in June, we have new computer and new computer systems, and we'll keep trying to improve the layout for you as we maximize how those systems provide it to us. So, we're learning in that regard, and we hope that we can make it clearer and easier for both you and the public to understand in the future. I wanna thank my staff, the city manager staff, all the department heads and their staff.
Do not do this alone. That part got on the mic, and I really certainly do appreciate it from my first six months here. They've been tremendously helpful, and I wanna thank everybody, particularly Laura, who's sitting next to me.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the Community Development Commission Resolution Number Two Thousand? Oh, wait, we're not on that one, are we? I'm sorry. Now, I'm confused about the order of the agenda. All right, we have a series of resolutions to adopt. I think that can be done in one, one motion to adopt the staff recommendation, if that's what...
That'd be, that'd be the easiest way to do it.
I think so.
Instead of reading them all.
Okay, who would like to make that motion?
Make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Close public hearing and, oh, this is not public hearing.
It's not public hearing.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Uh-oh.
Okay, the capital improvement budget does pass unanimously. We'll now go to item, discussion item five, and that's the two thousand and seven community So, we'll now go with the next presentation.
Thanks, Laura.
Mrs. Putnam, I assume that you're gonna give the presentation.
Actually, this is gonna be a group presentation, but I'm gonna lead it off. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The mitigated negative declarations for all five of the two hundred and, two thousand and seven community projects are before you for approval, as well as the projects for general approval. The five projects are the Fire Station One remodel and seismic retrofit, Fire Station Number Five at Melrose and Green Oak, Fire Station Number Six in Central Vista on East Vista Way at the Wildwood site, the Civic Center, and the Moonlight Amphitheater Stage House. I want to apologize for the lengthy add-to-packet that we provided, but it was important for us to provide detailed responses to all the technical comments we received on the environmental documents, and we've done that. And tonight, each of the project managers is gonna provide a brief status update for each of the projects, and then staff is going to be available to answer any questions you might have about the projects. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to the first project manager to begin, and that'll be Ally Zimmerman.
Thank you, good evening. Go ahead, yeah, thank you, Marcy. I'm first gonna talk about Fire Stations Number Five and Six. I'm gonna give, so, let's see. Status update, the Fire Stations Five and Six are both being designed by Cheff Katz Architecture. The designs are being done concurrently. We are expecting to see the ninety percent construction drawings later this week from the architect, and both of these stations are pursuing LEED certification. Talking specifically about Fire Station Number Five, this is the, the station that is on South Melrose at Green Oak Road. This is the site plan of the station. It is a thirteen, approximately thirteen thousand square foot station that has four apparatus bays, a drive-through bay, so the fire trucks come in from the, the entrances on your right-hand side, come around the back of the station and pull through, so that they can exit directly out at the signalized intersection that will be installed. The, the site itself is about one point nine acres, and it will include a significant retaining wall on the back, which is the west, and the left, which is the south sides, to minimize our impact on the environment. This is a rendering, a conceptual rendering of what Fire Station Five will look like. It is done in neutral tones to complement the surrounding area, and will be probably greens and tans and colors of that nature, and it's, but it will be quite large, it is four bays, so that's what it'll look like. Talking about Fire Station Number Six, this is the site that will be on East Vista Way at the site currently of the Wildwood Community Center and the Historical Society. The station is a three-bay station, about eleven thousand five hundred square feet, and it again has drive-through bays where the fire trucks will enter from what is the driveway on the left-hand side, the driveways that are at the top, then the left-hand side enter and drive through and come back around, so that again, they're facing outwards. The intersection, or at the apron of the apparatus bays, an intersection, or a signal will be put in that is very similar to the signal that's at Fire Station One, that is only operated when the fire trucks need to leave on an emergency call. So, they'll be positioned at that point. Conceptual rendering of Fire Station Number Six shows it is a three-bay station, and it will marry closer to the Ranch of Buena Vista Adobe that's nearby with a stucco exterior and red tile roof and arches.
Before you go on...
Sure.
How many spaces parking are gonna have there at Fire Station Number Six that will be available?
Parking right now is set at...
Can you go back, that picture back there?
Show this one?
Yes.
Right now, we have twenty-eight public parking spaces for Wildwood Park, and the intent is to reconfigure parking and programming for events that are happening at the Adobe and at the barn, if it's constructed, on, at City Hall, and these parking spaces would be specifically for Wildwood Park.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are these parking spaces that are in the front here, are those the parking spaces for the park, or are those just Fire Station parking places?
The parking for the park are the ones that are kind of at the top, that are double parking...
Over there?
Near the top, because that, that East Vista Way is at the top of this picture.
Oh, it's at the top, okay, got it.
Lopez?
Yes, thank you.
So, down here at the bottom, looking, facing the creek area, will the park be able to use those two?
The parking in the...
Or is that part of the...
The parking in the circle will be available for the park. The parking that is kind of in a line along the bottom will be behind a, a security gate and is for the fire station, for the firefighters.
So, have you done any kind of study on how many people and how many cars actually go to that Wildwood Park in any given day? How many people are there or on the weekends? How many cars are there? How many parking spots are there?
I think, I think Ms. Putnam may have a different answer, but it's difficult to say, because again, a lot of the parking is also used for the Adobe.
You have twenty-some parking spots for that entire park, is that correct?
That is correct. We did do some driveway counts, because we were trying to enumerate the, the difference in traffic, not in parking, and I, I'm not sure that I have those numbers, but they, they weren't terribly high, and we counted the driveway, use at every driveway for a three-day period.
Today, I went there, and there was hardly any place to park. There was hardly anything going on. So, I don't know how we're gonna do this, whether it'll really work to just those twenty parking spots for that, because obviously, people, are you gonna close the Adobe off when they, let's say you're gonna have a wedding there? Is that gonna be, is that park gonna be closed off at the gate when you do a wedding there? And that parking only for Wildwood?
The intent is that the parking for, that the use at the Adobe will be reoriented, and that the access will come from Alta Vista, from the City Hall side, so that we can use the parking at City Hall, which we think will have an abundance of, yes.
Okay.
I do just like to add, is that the majority of, of the review of, of the parking that has been used there on a regular basis, ongoing basis, it's usually higher at lunchtime, because there's, you know, people are sitting in the park. However, the majority of the use is for the Wildwood Center, which won't be there anymore. It'll be, it'll be torn down. And then, as far as the park, it is, it is configured to, to meet that, but as far as any use for the Adobe, as Ms. Putnam said, we would be shifting that over to the City Hall parking lot.
I don't know, you, since you put that playground equipment in there, I drive by there on weekends, and that place is packed, and the parking lot's packed, and it looks like they're using it, or the ones that are using it are the, are using the parking lot are the ones in the park, because, yeah, and I think it's not just the Wildwood Community Center as, as well. I think we're trying to shove a size thirteen foot into an eleven shoe, and I, but I, you know, I, honestly, I, I think, I don't know what the alternative is, except to, is to control this parking, and control the parking for the Adobe, and make sure that when we do rent it out for weddings and things like that, we're gonna have to make sure that they do park on the other side and come down the driveway. It seems a shame to me, because we oriented the, the whole Adobe to the, this parking lot.
We did the best we could to maximize parking and still make the fire station workable. One of the thoughts that we have had, and one of the discussions we'll be having, especially while the fire station is under construction, is with Lincoln, because as you know, they have a lot, the, the principal there, as you know, they have a large parking area that's right across the street from Wildwood Park, and especially on weekends when the park's busy, that's gonna be a fairly convenient parking area as well.
Except that's always full from kids playing Pop Warner football on the Lincoln Field. I don't mean to be an obstruction estimate.
My observation on weekends, I've seen families coming across Escondido Avenue, parking in Lincoln, because it's easier to get in and out of than our Wildwood parking, and so I don't know to what extent that's used, but I see quite a bit over there.
But I, I'm, I'm really amazed at the use that park gets now on weekends, there's always, you know, kids' parties going on there. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. You know, I look at this area as a, it's going to be an area that is well-used by our community. I look at this area as, as, maybe we should have done a more master plan of the whole area. We kinda rushed into this thing, we needed to do this quickly, but I think if it was a developer doing this on his own as a commercial or whatever, I don't think this thing would fly, because I think we're short on parking here. But I don't have the answers, and I don't wanna rain on your parade here, but I'm thinking that this thing needs to really be looked a little more with the parking situation, and we need to move on this, I know, but I don't know, I just, I just need to find more parking in this area, because you put in those little slides for those little family kids, and it created more traffic in that area, and will continue. To, to have people park in the school parking lot and cross Escondido Avenue, I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay.
Would you like me to continue?
No, that was a statement, that wasn't a question.
It was a statement.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
All right, next steps for Fire Stations Five and Six. We're currently negotiating with the top-rated fire station design builder to get a design builder in place... fire station design builder to get a design builder in place to start working on our constructibility review. This, we expect to bring this contract back to the City Council at your next meeting. We are anticipating that groundbreaking for both stations will occur in December, and they will be constructed concurrently, just as they were designed, and it should take about twelve to thirteen months to complete the construction. And that is all on, I have on Fire Stations Five and Six.
Mr. Campbell?
I should ask-
Did you hear Mr. Rabel's questions about FFNE differences?
Yes, I did.
Do you have a feel for what he's addressing there?
I, I do know that the estimates we had a year ago were just that estimates, and now our FFNE numbers include all of the fire apparatus that will be purchased, the outfitting to, we're hiring fifteen firefighters, and we need to get their equipment and their, we-
Well, isn't it the fact, don't we have two companies or two groups up at Fire Station One? One of them's gonna move down to Fire Station on South Melrose, or one of the two fire stations? Would that be the difference in the, in the FFNE if you're counting fire equipment?
It may be. I would, I'd wanna go back and look at my numbers more carefully and respond to Ms. Geldert, so she can get that information.
We'd really like to have an answer on that.
Sure.
Okay. Continue, please.
Talk briefly about Fire Station One. This is seismic retrofit and remodel of Fire Station One. This project is also being designed by Jeff Katz Architecture. However, we are in the very early stages of design. We have just started talking about what we need to do. We're working on getting our construction documents completed for the new fire stations, and then moving on to Fire Station One's remodel. It will be a seismic retrofit and an upgrade of the living quarters. Living quarters have not been remodeled in about thirty years. This is what Fire Station One looks like. I'm sorry, it's a blurry picture, but this is what it looks like. It is a three-bay station. There'll be no exterior changes, it's all interior, and our next steps are to get started on design, which should take three to five months. The anticipated construction phase is about six months, and our goal is to have Fire Station One reopened, it will actually be opened during construction, but refinished at about the same time as the two new stations are completed. And if you have no questions on that, then, okay.
Hey, how are you doing? You're not gonna ask? You're not gonna ask for a toll?
No, that's already in, that was in the condition.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you all know, the city has been working with the architecture firm of Carrier Johnson, along with the Civic Center Committee, which consists of Mayor Vance, Councilmember Lopez, and city staff since June of this year. We're currently in the schematic design phase at this time, and we've completed a preliminary site plan, and we also have developed conceptual drawings of what the building could look like on the site. Staff provided an update of the Civic Center project to the Planning Commission on October 2nd and received good suggestions and feedback from them. That was included in your packet as well. In addition, the first of the three public forums occurred on October 3rd, and the next one will be tomorrow night on October 10th at 7:00 PM at Wildwood. That was-
You mean the Wildwood?
Oh, my, sorry about that. I'll do better next time. And, so, yeah, there may not be next time. To receive public input, so that occurred last week, the next one will occur tomorrow night. The next slide you see is the preliminary site plan, and the preliminary site plan has been developed and consists of approximately a hundred thousand square foot of building space. Ninety thousand is in the three-story administrative facility that you see closest to the corners of Eucalyptus and Escondido. There's a single-story emergency operations center that doubles as a community room, that's approximately eleven thousand square feet, and there's a single-story central plant, which takes care of all the cooling and heating needs. The site, as you can see, will have adequate parking spaces, estimated at three hundred and eighty to four hundred and twenty spaces. The site currently has a hundred and seventy-two public parking spaces. One of the reasons, in addition to Civic Center parking for the additional space, is to facilitate the needs across the street at the Ranch Adobe that was spoke about earlier, as well as-
What is, does it move?
Sure, whatever you'd like.
Um, I'm aware of who's gonna do the site plan.
Okay. Also facilitate if there's a barn built in the future as well. The ornamental fence that currently divides the Civic Center and Library Site will be removed in an effort to join the two sites and allow for a continuous flow. As you can see on the site plan there, there's a green pedestrian walkway, that was one of the suggestions from the Planning Commission, and this will allow for more of a continuous flow for pedestrians and vehicles in the parking lot areas. And lastly, on the site plan, on the northeastern side is the park site, which is approximately four acres, and is proposed to be redevelopment, redeveloped as a passive park. Therefore, we're suggesting that the tennis courts and the skate park be removed, as was mentioned earlier, and staff is specifically looking at relocating the four tennis courts, two to three at Bringle Terrace, and one at an additional city park, which would bring the total number of tennis courts at Bringle Terrace from four to seven, or six, depending on the spacing. So that's it for the site plan, if you wanted to ask a question.
Several questions. First of all, there's been some discussion tonight about using the parking, I would imagine, up at the top there for the Adobe, so are we gonna put a crosswalk near that location to accommodate that, or?
We haven't decided that yet, but one of the things the architects have started to look at, based on feedback actually at the public forum the other night, was having a connecting path from the Adobe to the park area. Taking away, the new entrance will be the stone-stepped area there, and having some sort of path tie into the park area, so it's likely there could be a crosswalk.
Okay, okay. The second question I have, and I know we've talked about this before, this goes back a little history about the, historically, the fueling station that was there with the tank underground, I'm just concerned there might be future money that we have to pay. Are we doing some kind of soil study of that already to make sure there's no leakage?
Not at this time. We are the understanding through documents that we have that if there is a storage tank that was remaining on the site, it would be under the tennis court area, if it's still there. It's approximately six by six in size, it would have held a thousand gallons of fuel. It would, it would hopefully be dry before they put the tennis courts over there, but until we get into site construction, excavation of the property, we won't know.
It's just the cost that I'm afraid it might escalate. The last one thing I have is, and the first time I really saw the rendition of this site, and again, I think this is a pretty exciting site here too, I really like what I see, is the orientation of the building. I'm a big guy, you know, I believe in LEEDs and so forth, but, and most of the, most of the window space is in the back, which I guess is south-facing, but what that tends to do is makes the face of the building that faces the street be a large wall, and I'm really concerned about that for the aesthetics purposes of the attractiveness of this building. As I drive down Eucalyptus, I see a huge wall, so I know you don't wanna go back and redesign, but it's something to consider when you come into how you offset that and everything else. I think ultimately, it's gonna be a very attractive building, but I think that's gonna detract from it, unless you hide it somehow.
If I might, there's gonna be windows along that whole side on the Eucalyptus side.
Right, I understand that, but if you have another-
The backside will be-
Yeah.
More saw glass.
Exactly, and I think that's very attractive, but I think when you look at the side that faces Eucalyptus, I think what I saw was a straight wall, pretty much a straight wall and a venting-
Right.
Yeah, well, that's not what I saw, I mean, it-
We did have a conceptual drawing of what it could look like from the front, from Escondido and Eucalyptus, however, I should point out that that was conceptual only.
Okay.
To show what it could look like, how it could fit on the site, but it was by no means what it's going to look like-
I guess my comment is, do the best you can on that, because that's really gonna be what they're gonna see.
No, I agree with you, and I, no, it's not gonna be a blank, or a big wall, I'll tell you that.
Fair enough, okay.
This next slide that you see before you is a view from the northeast side of the property, showing how the park and the buildings are integrated into the site. Again, the drawing was done just to show conceptually how it could look on site, how it would fit on site, and there's not been any determination made on the exact look of the building, the materials used on the buildings, or the exact passive uses in the park at this point in time, and that's why we're soliciting the community feedback, as was mentioned. And you can also see from this slide as well, from the northeast side, is what the mayor mentioned, was all the windows, taking advantage of the light, the interior light that'll flow through the building, as well as a three-story atrium that would have a light going through, and you'd be able to see from the, from the street side into the park and from the park out to the street. And the next steps, as the project moves forward, again, we're gonna host the next forum tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Wildwood Community Center. The wrap-up forum will be held on Monday, October 29th, and we encourage the city to show up and provide us their input. This will assist us in completing the schematic design phase, and as that nears completion, we're planning on coming back to the City Council on November 13th for a detailed presentation from staff and the Carrier Johnson design team for the City Council. So, that concludes my presentation.
Wait, I just noticed here that the project completion is expected July 2010. I thought it was March 2010. Is it slipping already? How much more is it gonna slip?
It will not slip beyond July.
My gosh, I don't think I've, we've ever seen March, have you heard March 2010?
Yeah.
Patrick, did you make a promise to the mayor?
I made no promises.
I guess I had always put, I'd always put August and September, Patrick tells me July, so we're-
This might be my last day.
It might be my last day. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, Mrs. Zimmerman?
Hi, back again to talk about the sports park. Status update on the sports park is that we came to you in June recommending hiring-
Before you, before, sorry, sorry. Did you have something, Mr. Lopez?
That's all right.
Are you sure?
You can go on.
Okay.
Thank you. We came to you in June recommending hiring David Vols Design to lead the architecture and engineering team to design the sports park, that was in June. We've been working with David Vols Design, taking the concept plan that was drafted by the landscape architect for Concordia Homes, and trying to tweak that design to maximize all the things we'd like to do on the park site. We're working with, we're working with the architect staff and also in conjunction with the city's sports park committee, and to, to look at some alternatives and adjust the plan before we move into construction drawings. Let's see, I'm not sure what the third bullet is, so please ignore, I think that is a mistake, so I'm gonna move on. Okay. Here is the sports park as it stands right now. This is a different alternative than what David McCullough showed. What this does is allow for a passive park area in between the, the fields and the parking spaces. What we're working, we've shown this plan to the sports park committee, to the sports league's presidents, and also to the Parks and Rec Commission, and each of those groups has commented that they would like us to maximize the space between the fields for warm-up and play area, and maybe not necessarily have that large of a passive park area. They've also recommended that the area that is identified as the future community center be moved and adjusted so that some more parking can be closer to the field areas. We're working on these, we have a number of alternatives that are coming in from our architect, and we're going to come back with something for the City Council and also for the sports park committee and Parks and Rec to look at. But this is, as it stands right now, we still have our, let me move to this slide, the next slide shows some of the items that we're putting in, starting at the top left and we'll go counterclockwise. All the fields will be lighted, and we're gonna be using the musco lights that have the screens to minimize the light spill into the surrounding areas. There are a number of spots around the perimeter of the park and around the park trail where we can reuse the existing rock outcroppings that are there to, for some architectural feature and to show kind of how the landscape used to be. The synthetic turf fields, the multi-use fields will be striped for both soccer and football, they will be regulation for soccer and football. In the passive park area, we're planning to have not just passive flat area, that's where the space will be for families to gather, there'll be a tot lot there, will be, have some shading for shade and also for protection from fly balls. The facilities maintenance building will be located somewhere in the lower portion of that, and then skipping a tiny bit, oh, we will have some areas for educational opportunities in that area, and also the six thousand square foot multi-use building that will house the restrooms, the concessions, and the storage for the leagues will also all be in that passive area, so it will be, get a little bit cramped. There, and as we've discussed before, there's a trail connection that will be all the way around the perimeter of the park, leading from our parking lot, which is in the bottom right of this design, to the top left, which is the connection with the county. If you have any questions, or I can-
Are you done with the park itself?
I'm done.
All right, yeah, I have one question. Your next, your next page said next steps, and says design phase and all that, and construction phase. As we know, housing developments are taking a little bit longer to construct now, and Concordia may not be constructing on the timeline that we want to get access to the park, so how are we gonna have access to the park, and when are we gonna know for sure when we might have that access?
We have been talking to Concordia on a regular basis. Their construction schedule has moved from December of 2007 start to, which they don't, didn't have their resource agency permits anyway, so that probably wouldn't have been possible, but they're now looking at a May of 2008 start date. That would be even before we plan to start construction in September of 2008. If we can, if Concordia's schedule even slips further beyond May of 2008 to September of 2008, we think we would have plenty of time working in concert with them to finish our park on schedule. So we have a good year here to work with Concordia to, to accomplish the project, and, you know, we're very hopeful that they'll move forward in May, but we still have a little bit of additional time if they don't do that.
What if the, you know, the housing market just goes in the tank, and, and do we have any alternatives?
And we have one very good alternative source of fill. Caltrans is doing a major State Route 76 project, so getting the fill for the park at a nearby source is a possibility. The expense of constructing the road is another issue. One fabulous resource that Concordia was contributing to this project was building a road all the way from Bo Beere to the sports park that would be very costly. So we're still very hopeful that they'll, that they will do that.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. Moving back for the future community center.
Mr. Micah?
Thank you. For the future community center, I know, you just spoke that that could possibly be flipped another way. Have you, have you really studied that part of it as far as how it's gonna look on, on the, on the whole project, whether, I know there was talk about possibly flipping it over where the parking on the right, and leaving that open more for elderly people that come to see their grandkids, so they don't have to walk so far. Have, did you do any studying on that, or are you just deciding to, how are you deciding that?
Actually, each of the community groups that we, well, the Parks and Rec Commission and the two committees, all recommended moving the pad for the community center over to the right. We are still looking at all, at all of the alternatives and trying to determine what's the best use. There was an initial idea that since this will be not built at the same time, that area could be grassed over and it would become an extension of the passive park, but everyone else that we've, all the groups that we've been talking to have said they prefer to have parking closer and have maybe some warm-up, still grass it over on the right side and have warm-ups and area over there for warm-ups, and it gets to be used the same way.
Uh-huh. Well, the, I know there's a lot of rock in the area, huge boulders, and I know you're gonna have a lot of bank area. Are, is there plans to use a lot of that big boulders in the bank, or save a lot of that rock, or do we have an excess of rock, big boulders, or, because a lot of that will really go good amongst your landscaping. What's the plan for, how much rock or what, boulders?
The landscape architect is recommending that we preserve some of the boulders on site for decorative features, but there's a lot more rock than we can use for decorative features, and primarily, it will be crushed and placed in the fill.
What fill?
This park involves about two hundred and fifty thousand yards of fill.
Uh-huh.
So we're bringing the site up significantly from the- So, we're bringing the site up significantly from the level it currently exists. So, what will happen is initially, you'll go in and do the cut, and you'll cut into rock. And as you cut into rock on both our site and Concordia's, it'll be moved down to the northerly portion of the site and crushed and put in the bottom of the fill slope.
One of the things that, you have a great big creek area coming through there, and I learned a long time ago that you try and save as much of these rock and use it in your landscaping. A lot of this can be used as a land, as in that creek area to create like little waterfalls in that creek area, because maybe down the road, that can become a continuous creek down that creek area. So, looking at that creek area, maybe we can save a lot of that rock and use it as decoration or design it where that is used and get the benefit out of it instead of crushing and burying it. That would, and then when you move rock, it has a funny look sometimes as far as stained and all that. But rock, when you, when you use it in landscaping, and if you want to get the beauty out of the rock, you come back and sandblast it, and that brings a nice look into your rocks, and you can do that. But I think that creek area could really be a real plus with little trails going through it so that kids can actually enjoy that and have picnic areas. Have you looked at any of that?
Yes, we have. In fact, the original plan had a trail connection across the creek. The impacts on the habitat there that include the potential endangered Lee Spels Vario caused us to pull our entire project back. The line that you see, the dash line that you see on the left-hand side of the screen is our limit of grading. We'll have orange construction fences up there, and there won't be any work allowed by the resource agencies within that habitat area other than a little bit of habitat restoration. So, while your idea is really a good one aesthetically to put boulders down there and to enhance it and to encourage people to use it would be great, but if we were to have that as part of our project, we would never get a permit to construct it.
Well, you would think that if you develop that into a beautiful, even nicer, more habitat would occur there, that you would see that they would probably go for that instead of just, but it'll look trashy all the time. You will never have a real look to it.
To understand it better, for them, it's really not about how it looks. It's about preserving the habitat values, and they really don't want us in there doing, doing any kind of creek restoration work.
Ah, thank you. Waste of time, you know. Not your part, Robin, just, just to, you know...
One other thing, Mayor.
Sure.
I'd just like to say that I had my light on earlier, and I didn't get picked, so that's all right. But I wanted to say that with the Civic Center, that the mayor and I have spent a lot of time, and our staff, Robin and Mr. Johnson, have been very good as far as working with us. And the Civic Center, we're, we're looking at it to actually get all the lighting, Mr. Gronky, on it. And the walls on it are not just going to be walls. They're going to have a design. They're going to look nice. And we spent a lot of time, we've gone a lot of places to look at different city halls. And to be honest with me, with you, the floor plan, the plan of it, I did not like. But what happens with this particular floor plan is, or this plan, that after a while, it starts growing on you. And the thing is, I hear in the community that they want Spanish architecture and this and that, but in my opinion, this is my opinion, looking at it, that the Spanish architecture in big buildings doesn't look as good. And so, what happens is that we need to do the best we can. Some people say it might be too modern for our community, but maybe we need a little change. And I think that this group that we have has really gone out to try and figure out what we can accommodate that architect that you're looking for in this, hopefully, and things are not in stone yet. And I think by the time we get colors and design, we're looking at architectural design on the outside also. So, that will enhance the building where you just don't see a wall. And another thing that we'll be bringing up, hopefully tomorrow night, will be that the developer, I mean, the architect incorporates more art in this Civic Center so that we have more statues. But you need to do that as you're designing. You don't do that after the fact. So, hopefully tomorrow, that'll come out some more, and hopefully that the, we have a great architectural, a great art folks in our community and a lot of great ideas. Hopefully, that when you look at the Civic Center, it'll be a nice focal spot for our community where we will be proud. Sure, it's going to cost us some money, but what we need is, we need a change here. And this will definitely be a change for Vista and hope that the people of our community, folks of our community, don't get disappointed in what it looks like. But I think that, in my opinion, that we're going in the right direction, and we have two good staff that are leading us in the right direction with the good architect that we picked. And it's been, it's been confusing at times working with, trying to come up with a city Civic Center. It's not easy. And Vista is going to build it, and we're going to be proud of it. And thank you, Mr. Johnson and Robin, for this. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Campbell?
Thanks, Mayor. This morning at a breakfast, we heard from several water officials that there's in the works to get a rebate for synthetic turf because there's a crisis in water in California. Not only will they be asking us to conserve water, but they'll be raising rates. So, all of this compounded says synthetic turf's not a bad idea, really, providing it lasts for a while and works out the way we would. But if, in fact, there's a dollar a square foot rebate coming through, we're looking at 160,000 square feet of turf, as I see the numbers in the report. Maybe we want to make sure we latch onto that and get hold of that $160,000.
Thank you.
Mr. Gronky?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment what Mr. Lopez just said. My comment was that, in the...
Thank you so much. In the renderings that I saw, I saw a lot of amenities on the backside of the building. You know, the way the hillside came down and the, and all the outside stairwells and the window space and everything, and I thought, oh, that's pretty beautiful. And overall, the Civic Center is a beautifully unique site. I'll get a little feedback here. But what I saw, and I think Mrs. Putnam picked up on, was the fact that I didn't see a lot of amenities on the front side, and so I just hope that we'll go in that direction.
We're working on that.
Yeah. And follow up with Mr. Campbell said, I know that the leads certification we did for the fire stations was important, and I think because of environmental and water issues, we might consider the same for this building, too. I know there hasn't been too much of discussion of that yet, but we saw that, I happened to look at that video that we got at that conference, and I think it'd be very appropriate for this building.
That is it on the park. No serial questions.
Oh, were we talking about the park?
Drought tolerant plants like pampas grass and things.
That's good.
See this coffee?
Missouri town.
How much did it cost to put the lawn in?
Seven thousand. Good evening. So, on the other side of town, from Gohomi, we have the Moonlight Amphitheater Stage House project. Start with a little blast to the past with the amphitheater was built, as many of you know, by the Vista Foundation and the Moonlight Cultural Foundation in 1975 as a bicentennial project.
Why can't we go back to that?
You know what? That served its purpose. We think that's early stages of the Summer Theater Fest, started in 1981, and grew, continues today with the Moonlight stage productions of the summer season.
Just one question. What was the date of that picture?
We're not sure. We didn't have a date on it. We think it's the early 80s.
Did we have, we did not have a stage house in 1981 when we started the place?
A stage, with walls and such?
Yeah.
No.
It was just like that?
Correct. It started with the concrete stage and the terrace, the terrace seating. Wonderful space. I mean, you see, brangle, terrace recenter's not in the back. So, this is sometime between 1976 and probably 1981.
Wow.
But it did start just with that stage. So, over the years, changes. We extended the stage to see, you can see where, what it looks like currently. This is as a loadout is happening at the end of the season. The walls went up, the seating was added, the grass, lots of facility improvements, ultimately striving for that master plan to actually build the stage house and enclose it. Lots of damage over the winter season. The stage is rebuilt annually. The walls are replaced every couple of years. So, where we are today on the project, our status update, requests for proposals were sent to four selected design builders from the city's approved design build list. We selected, we had four proposals received and interviewed four firms. We have, will be coming back to you at the next council meeting in October with a selection recommendation. Also, we had plans that were worked on the beginning part of the year, completed in July of this year, 30% documents. Those documents will be used to bridge into our design build process, and they were also included in the request for proposals. So, the design builders already had taken a look at those. Part of those plans was a concept rendering that you see in front of you now, showing in concept what it would look like in the theater. I'm going to use this concept rendering to tell you a little bit, a few of the highlights, proposed components. First and foremost, as you mentioned, Mayor, enclosing it and actually building a proper stage house with a fly loft. The fly loft is the area that is just shaded now. That enables us to actually, the Moonlight stage productions and other users of the facility to actually fly scenery and equipment up and out of the way, rather than, right now, they are very limited in what they can actually track offstage, and then any equipment is just dead hung and fixed. A lot of questions have come up about the height of the facility. Right now, it's proposed to be about 70 feet tall at the top of that curve. It's actually an architectural curve to soften the look. The roof line is about 60 feet, and that is driven by the, actually, I put that on there to show the existing facility is about 30 feet tall, the top of that, the blue wall. But it's driven by the proscenium opening, and when you actually have a drop to fill that opening, what you need is approximately twice the size of that drop, which is about 30 feet, so that it actually flies away and is hidden from the audience perspective, ideally goes away with the equipment. So, generally, twice the size. If you have a 30-foot opening, you have 60 feet to the roof line. So, that's the primary reason we're looking at a space that's about 60 to 70 feet tall. Another key component, the lighting and audio canopy with acoustical treatment. The acoustical treatment, you kind of see the darker areas where the arrows are pointing. That's to help minimize any noise impact to the surrounding areas. We're also looking at a rehearsal room on the left side and a workshop on the right side, and also an orchestra pit. Currently, there is an orchestra area at the facility. This proposal actually increases the number of musicians from, say, 20 to 25 currently. There'll be space for 30 to 35 musicians in the new proposed space. Side elevation was also done as part of those plans. Just to give you a little different perspective, the canopy with acoustical treatment, you can see it also on this angle. Lighting, audio rigging, audiovisual and rigging package is a huge component of this. Right now, the rental equipment goes away at the end of the summer, not very attractive for other users to come in because then you have to install it all and then take it all down. The, all that infrastructure, theatrical packages will be part of this facility, which will be a very key benefit, not only to Moonlight stage productions, but to other users as well. Backseats dressing rooms and restrooms to replace the temporary facilities in back that are currently being used. Costume room, right now, laundry's done, taken home at the end of night and done either at laundromats or in personal residences, so that's a key benefit as well. All of these things combined, a key goal in this is to increase programming and facility usage. Lots of opportunities here for family-style entertainment touring groups, whether it's Kid Bob's World Tour, Tap Kids. Also, perhaps we can do film festivals, say, a Halloween movie event for family, black and white classics, world culture festivals, Shakespeare festivals, or concerts perhaps in conjunction with Belly Up or House of Blues. But the key is that we would be able to use this facility instead of three to four months out of the year, seven to eight months out of the year. Next steps, design pre-construction agreement would come to you at the next council meeting for approval. Immediately after that, we would start the design and pre-construction process. We would come back in the spring of 2008 for the construction contract, for approval of that, and then actually start construction in September of 2008. As soon as the summer season ends, we would start demos soon after that. And the goal would be then to be up and running again for the season, summer season 2009. So, it's a little under a 10-month construction time period. And that's the end of that presentation.
We have some questions. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. Since you are going higher in the, in the building, I was last year up at the Vista Garden, and I could hear the noise down there, the music, so loud. Now, going higher in there, is the canopy that you have out there, since you're going up, will it help the noise any? Will it help keep it low, keep the noise down? Or since you're going up, are you going to have more noise?
It's an interesting balance. We do have an acoustical consultant on the team to help us with that. Since the speakers and the equipment actually go up, the potential is, we need to contain it, basically. So, it's that balance. And the other component is that, is that we're proposing to use the facility more. So, and instead of just three to four months out of the summer, we'd be using, have increased. So, that would also need to be mitigated in some sense. So, as much as we can do to minimize that impact, they're looking at all angles and doing acoustical studies. We actually did two studies this summer as well in preparation for the design build process.
So, now that we're going to build a nice, big area and be able to do more in between, which I think that we should, I think that, you know, I go down to San Diego to listen to rock and roll bands and oldie but goodie music.
You go to listen to rock and roll bands?
That's right. I go, I love music. And so, what happens is that I've always said that we need something here in our, in our community. And, but since it's going to be so much more bigger, or whatever you want to call it, what are we doing for parking?
Parking-wise, we still have adequate space. The new ADA accessible lot, increased size, and then the lot, the main lot would still be accessible. So, I think the, the capacity of the Moonlight is not necessarily changing. So, the seating capacity, we would be using it more often, but the same capacity. So, the parking would be...
The same?
Would be the same. I mean, obviously, it would need to be addressed if it, you know, if the capacity starts or the average attendance starts growing to such an extent that there's not enough parking. And that would have to be addressed.
Is there any plan for future parking or anything else?
Shuttle from the senior center.
Shuttle from the senior center.
Well, I think also that it's, is that now when we're at capacity, the capacity on the Moonlight, and now when it's, what would, you reach 2,000?
Yeah.
Approximately 2,000, and, and it's, you know, it's a little cramped, but they... you know, it's a little cramped, but they parked that when they had the productions there, so the parking is adequate for that now. You're probably not going to get that many more people in the seats. I mean, the same thing that we do on 4th of July, when you have a major event, or the Scottish Highlands Games, is we have busing from other lots around town.
You're going to get more people coming into this thing when you develop this thing.
Right. And so you have, so that's, we've always had backup plans when the park is beyond the, just the seating capacity, we had, then we have the parking around town where we bus and shuttle people in.
One more thing. When you develop something like this in your community, you bring a lot of people to your community. It's going to cost money to do this, but what you're going to benefit from is that people will come from other cities and do business in your restaurants, gas stations, whatever. They will do business and the, whatever increases that you have are going to be made up with this theater, let me tell you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gronke?
You know, when we started this whole process of putting all these projects together, there was a certain cost, and Mr. Rabel brought up, that there's, has been some escalation. But this one more so than I think any other project, has seen some major escalation. And I have a couple of things that I'd like to have clarified, because I've asked the question before, but I've really never got this, the answer to it. One of the major costs for the improvement of this site is a requirement for ADA improvements. And I'm to understand that we have to take ADA all the way, some type of ramping system all the way from Bringle Terrace Drive because there's public access there? Is that what we're looking at here?
What the handicap accessibility rules say is that we have to have access from the public way.
Yes.
And the public way is Vale Terrace Drive. One of, in hiring the design builder, one of the first steps we're going to be working on with them is a design for accessibility. And we're actually talking about starting to meet right away to talk about what the improvements need to be. But one of the things that is required by law is access to the public way.
I can appreciate that the law says that we need to have access for those in need. But it seems to me that, and I don't see it on the site map here, I'm still confused on exactly what that means as a project, as it pertains to this project.
And as soon as the design builder has a tentative design for our accessibility improvements, we'll share that with you. One of the reasons why we felt it was especially a good idea to go design build on the Moonlight was to get the contractor and the designer working in concert with the city to find the most cost-effective way to meet these requirements.
And what kind of price tag are we talking about?
I think that the design builder that we're going to recommend be selected thought that the package was about $1 million. And we'll know more after we spend some time walking the park, looking at the improvements that are necessary in them, designing them. But I think having a contractor involved in it will be really useful because they can help us with the most cost-effective ways to make these things happen.
I'd like to know the information as soon as it comes out, okay?
Yeah, and I expect within two months or so, we should have some information about what we think the accessibility package is going to look like.
Okay. The other piece, tonight's been a night of assumptions, and just as I came into tonight assuming that we were going to remove one church as we built another, when this was first proposed to me, I thought that was going to be an outside agency, a non-profit agency, that was going to contribute to the construction of this building. And I'm just wondering if you still have conversations with that agency and whether or not we might see some success with those conversations.
The Moonlight Cultural Foundation has been discussing this with the city, and for, it appears, and we're going to be meeting with them actually again this week, that they're going to be raising funds for the lighting and sound package. And we call it plug and play. And the city is going to install all the infrastructure, the electrical and everything for these systems, but all the types of lighting devices and the sound devices that you can plug in and use, such as the things that we now rent, they are planning to launch a fundraising campaign for.
Okay, thank you for that. You know, again, I'm apprehensive, you know, and I'm speaking about the entire package now. I'm apprehensive because I know the prices continue to go up. And I think we're at a point where we're starting to get construction costs, and we have a better handle on that number. But as I've seen from many, many projects, what you say at the beginning of the project and what you end up paying ultimately are two different numbers. So we can just keep our fingers crossed on that.
Very good. You know, you've put together over the last few months a rather large package of projects, and you've done it rapidly and very comprehensively. And I, you know, I know for one member of the city council, I truly appreciate that and for the hard work, and I know it's many hours that you've put into it, all of it. And I'm pleased with the progress that we're making, very pleased. We have one speaker.
And I've got page numbers on all the ones that I printed. I didn't print everything. Staff is asking for you to bless mitigated negative declarations, five different projects.
All right.
The one project, the one exhibit that I did, did print, Exhibit A, deals with the mitigated negative declaration on the Moonlight Amphitheater renovation dated October 1. The MND is available for a 20-day public review period from October 1st through October 21st. The public comment section, period is still in effect, and I assume that it is for the other MNDs as well. I question whether it's appropriate that city council jumped the gun and approved the mitigated negative deck before the public review period is completed. The, it's a 20-day review period, which is short from my recollection of the process, but I, I question whether or not it's at all appropriate that city council act while the, the environmental document is still out for public review.
Could we have Ms. Putnam respond to that, please?
I'd be happy to respond to that. The public review period was October 1st to October 20, 2002. The Moonlight project, this is another, one of the phases, the many phases of the Moonlight project. So that occurred many years ago, so we would never bring a project in before the public review period was concluded.
Now I understand why it's signed 2002. What about the other MNDs? Are they, they're all blessed now?
They are, the public review period on all of them has concluded, and we wouldn't bring them to the council if it wasn't.
It's been a long day. Good luck to you.
It has been. Thank you very much. Okay, Mrs. Gelder.
Just wanted to add to the mayor's comments. Thank you very much, is that I was at a meeting recently and had a number of people talk to, to me about the Vista's community projects and the teams that they had hired, hiring multiple outside consulting firms, and none of them have an impressive team like we have. They have usually about 15 people for a number of projects like this. One had a civic center project that was a little bit larger than ours, and they have a team of people outside hired and a contract several million dollars, and there's nine people on that team. We have, before you is you have, on our civic center project, you have two people with Ms. Putnam as the leader of all of them. You have your four core together, that's the, I guess I call it the dream team, and with Mr. Johnson, Ms. Zimmerman, and Ms. Artell, with strong backup from two department directors, Chief Fisher and Kathy Brandell, Ms. Brandell. So I feel really fortunate to work with this. It's really exciting. I have not seen anybody ever work harder on some things, and it's so exciting to see that. But we really, in looking at this, other communities are trying to emulate this, and they're, they're not even able to become close, to come close on such massive projects. So it's just, wanted to thank them again.
And I'll thank them very much when it's finished on March of 2010. Okay, we have items to, are the two resolutions to adopt, so would there, is there someone that would like to make a motion? Mr. Campbell?
Well, Mayor, first, I had a little sidebar conversation with our attorney. I've not spoken on this issue deliberately because of proximity of ownership of properties with relationship to Station 6 and Civic Center. And I think just out of a matter of prudence, I should abstain from voting on any items here on this issue.
I'll go ahead and make the motion after you just said that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Those who can, vote, vote. Okay, four yeses and one abstention. Very good. Thank you very much. Well done. Now, that concludes, finally concludes the items that we have on the agenda. Man, we haven't gone this late for a long time. It was a good meeting, got a lot accomplished, and so we'll now have staff and council reports. I'm sorry? If you'd just have a seat, Ms. Brandell. Mr. Piper?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Gelder?
No reports. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
I want to pass a slate tonight.
Mr. Lopez, I started with you.
Yeah, I know, but I know you're tired, everybody's tired.
All right. Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, I was going to ask Mrs. Brandell if she'd remind us, please, about Vista Rocks and how people sign up online and what hours this is. And this is a very exciting thing, and we, the community can, can participate, but how do they do that?
Do this, but I'll do the best I can. Oh, to the rescue, Ally. Vista's Rock had to sign up and all the good. I'm signed up. I do know how to do it.
We are encouraging online registration this year. If you go to the city's website, which is www.cityofvista.com, right on the front page, you'll see a link to Vista's Rock, and you can follow the instructions to sign up online. That saves both the city and the Vista Townsite Community Partnership staff many, many hours in typing in those hand-filled-out waivers that we normally use. If you don't sign up by about midday on Friday, you will have to just bring the hand waiver, the, the hard copy waiver, which is also on the website with you to the project on Saturday morning. Parking is at Vista High School, and we'll be shuttling over to the project site. The shuttle starts at about 7:30. Project day begins at 8:00.
Thank you. Very good, very good. Mr.?
I'd like to thank the gentleman that's out there in front for staying the whole night. Thank you.
That's you, Mr. Jantsch.
Thank you.
Bless Jantsch. Thank you.
Bless for saying thank you for coming and staying the whole time. All right. Mrs. Ritter?
I just apologize for all my coughing tonight, because I had, had the bad cough cold that everybody has around here, so.
We certainly hope that you get to feeling better, and we certainly hope that you didn't give it to the rest of us.
I hope I didn't either.
Mr. Gronke?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Like so many times, we make such great decisions late at night, you know, some major decisions that we made tonight, and particularly about our capital improvement projects, and I just wish more people here to hear us do it. See you guys at Vista Rock.
Okay, just one comment. We had some more sheriff's deputies on decoy soliciting alcohol at various restaurants, and guess what? No one bought, no one gave it to them.
Wonderful.
So that's great. That's good news. With that, we'll now conclude and adjourn for the next two weeks.